Mr. Ginsburg, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Please rise, put your hand over your heart.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's please draw me on the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time we'll observe a moment of silence. I would hope that you would please keep your thoughts on Mr. Michael Landsberry, a Sparks Middle School math teacher, soccer, basketball and volleyball coach, Marine, Nevada National Guard Master Sergeant. He served our country and community with honor. Our thoughts are with his family, his students that he so obviously loved, and his fellow teachers and the entire community. I'd especially like to thank all the teachers, the faculty, the students, and our first responders for their courageous actions on Monday that helped protect the lives of so many students. As I told our friend, the mayor of Sparks, if there's anything that we at the city of Reno could do, we will and are one community. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Shivi, Brekis, absent, Zadra, Delgado, absent, Dorch, Jordan, Kishel.
Here. Public comment? Mark Estey.
Hello, my name's Mark Estey. I wanted to thank you for the chance to address you all today. Up here are some good things. I just wanted to take this time to thank the mayor and the city council for their continued support of local entrepreneurs. I also wanted to thank the business license staff for their help, patience, professionalism, assistance, and guidance through the application process. We're on the sheet today from item E1, and it just was time that I come up and tell you guys publicly, thank you for all you've done for us and other businesses in town. So Reno's a great place to live and do business. I say, "Go Reno." And just a reminder, we have a restaurant compo open five days, seven days a week in the Paladio. And then the Nevada Museum of Art, we just opened up a restaurant called Shay Louie, which is open for lunch five days a week. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. David Shisker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, honorable council people. My name is David Shikar, I'm an independent artist. On October 18th, I sent you all an email, and I think I accidentally resent it again today. I'm still constantly baffled by digital technology. But the reason I'm here today is the October 18th email, I was trying to make a point about a legal issue concerning the revision of the Artist Code. And in the process of making that point, I inadvertently had insulted a council member. And I'm here today to apologize publicly to Mr. Dorch, because at the end of that email, Mr. Dorch had a very legitimate question about the differences concerning licensing and permitting between a hot dog vendor and an artist. And I concluded that by saying, "Don't be a Dorch, get educated." And I realize now that my attempt to make a point at the expense of another person was out of line. And Mr. Dorch, I apologize to you, sir. I did not mean any offense. And I also thought perhaps maybe I could make amends by extending an invitation to you. Next time you see me sketching downtown Reno, if I've got my easel set up and I'm sketching, open invitation. Bring a table, a chair, you could express your First Amendment rights along with me, you could promote any cause that you want. And what's really cool about that, we'll be implementing the rights that we've all taken an oath to protect, defend, and uphold the Constitution. But just as important as that, we'll have a lot of fun, because when you're in the public eye and you're in downtown Reno, you get to meet all the great people of Reno. And we'll have a lot of fun, and I'd encourage you to do that or any other council person. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you very much. Chip Hobson.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor and Council, Chip Hobson and Mike Ginsburg, I think you've got a sheet for Mike, too, on behalf of-
Mike Ginsburg, come on up. You're talking at the same time?
Yeah.
That's great.
We'll save you some time here and just do it once. On behalf of the Board of, we're here on behalf of the Board of Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics today, and we're here to thank the city of Reno for its cosponsorship of our Aqua Fest event, which was held back in August. The city of Reno threw their cosponsorship and provision of both the Idowild Pool Facility as well as the California Building for our fundraiser. Also, the neighborhood advisory boards. Each and every neighborhood advisory board that we were able to get in front of supported our event this year, and we're very appreciative of that, and thank the council on their behalf. Also Parks and Rec for all their cooperation and work with us in coordinating and setting up the event. We had a great day. We had started early in the morning with clinics for competitive and lap swimmers and triathletes. Following that, we had a fun relay for the kids that were all able to come and participate with the Olympic athletes that we brought into town. Then we had an open swim day for the public, for the citizens of Reno and the citizens of the community, to come out and enjoy Idowild Pool for the afternoon at no charge. Thought that it was pretty neat that the early student, or early participants in that, as we were wrapping it up, a number of them donated the normal entry fees that they would have paid to go to the pool to the cause of trying to bring a new pool to the city. Just felt they should pay anyway and asked us to use that to help out, and every little bit helps. And then in the evening, we had our fundraising event at the California Building and had a real successful evening, I think our most successful event to date. And just wanted to thank the council and the city of Reno for all their support in the event. We have a, you've all got individual copies of a signed poster from the athletes, we've got a copy that we would like to present to the mayor for the city. And again, thank you very much, and we hope to, in very short order, be bringing before you our plan to bring a newest center to the Moana site, as we've all been striving for so long now to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. Super. Okay. Thank you. William Fisher.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, and ladies and gentlemen. This is quick. It's the eighth year that I've been able to, with the Lord's help and all the businesses of Reno, invite you all to a Thanksgiving dinner. This dinner is mainly for families and children that really couldn't afford to go out or have a good dinner. So if you know a family in need, please call me. My phone number's on the bottom of this flyer. I'll leave these flyers out at the front desk for anybody that needs one. And if you call me, handicapped women and children always come first. And I wasn't going to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. If you have alcohol in your breath, you will go to the end of the line, but you will be served. Okay? I just want to make sure that the dinner is for families and that they don't smell alcohol and they don't hear bad language. These kids are number one in my heart, as with the Pathfinder Children's Group. God has allowed me to do a lot of things. I love my community, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support again this year. We'll leave it at that. God bless.
Thank you. Mark Marquel.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city manager. Marquel, concerned during your resident, concerned during your resident. It's been, I spent half my life messed up now. October 12th was the anniversary of my crash. I was out celebrating Columbus Day. Ha ha ha. Anyways, in the city of Reno, last year, we had five DUIs and four accident, no, three accidents. And this year, we had eight DUIs and four accidents. So it's getting worse. I don't know how many, I want to bet that most of these are out of towners, but I don't know. I, well, it's pretty cheap. Okay. They're out, most of them are out of towners, huh?
What's that, Mark? I'm sorry.
Most of them are out of towners, huh?
I couldn't say that.
Okay. Well, I forgot to ask you that. But anyways, I rolled, I was a passenger in a vehicle that rolled eight times and landed on my head and put me in a coma for a month. So I have knowledge of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Billy Andrews.
Hello, I am Billy Andrews, and I am here today to speak on behalf of Harps Historic Reno Preservation Society. And I set an invitation in front of everyone, the mayor and city council members, and I would like to invite you and the public to our ribbon cutting on Sunday, November 10th at 1:00 PM on the corner of Donner and Nixon. Harps has just finished a successful fundraising campaign to raise the money to restore the Eight Pillars on Nixon Street, which marked the entryway to the Newlands Manor that was originated, they were put there in 1927. This, I would also like to thank the city because Jenny Brekis allocated $1,000 from her, whatever her budget was. And then we did a grassroots campaign to raise over $7,000, maybe possibly even $8,000, and then Harps put in the rest of the money needed to complete the full restoration. And we feel this is a very important project because it helps its historic preservation and one of Reno's longest historic and best-preserved neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eddie Lorton.
My name's Eddie Lorton, for the record, city council. In light of what happened the other day, I'm going to keep a positive note and not go into a few things. But I did, I was looking at a couple things here on the agenda that I really hope you'll consider. On A16, we're talking about settling with the parking kiosk people, and I'm hoping that we've considered all the lost revenue of $330,000 a year, which we've lost out on, too, during that settlement. And then I see over here on J2, we're also considering getting back right into it again. I hope you can really take a break, when we've seen off meters, we make money, supply jobs, and I don't know why we keep trying to pound this thing home when so far nothing's worked and it's costing nothing but money. When the other way wasn't broke, I wish we wouldn't keep trying to fix it, and we could make $330,000 a year for the city. Well, thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you very much. Tracy Chase.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. It is my pleasure and our city attorney's pleasure to introduce our new two attorneys in the office, and they are replacing retirements in the office. They both have over five years of experience, so they come to us with a whole plate full of experience that we can utilize in the office. We have Mark Donegan, and he comes from the McDonald Carano Law Firm, and we have Julie Towler. Julie worked for the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety. And we wanted to introduce them to you so you knew their faces, if you saw them in City Hall, and the members of the public did as well. In addition, we wanted to let you know that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Now, we put on, in front of each of you, a little purple pen. If you wear this pen during the month of October, you are telling your family, friends, and community that together we can stop domestic violence. So our office would appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Sam Dene. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Not you, I'm sorry, Mr. Dene.
Sam Dene, the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam, that's me, is a nice chortle over there, I liked that. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the borders. And I've found through my 20 years of government, fill-in tropical government oversight, watchdogging here in Reno area, I've found we have as many enemies inside of the borders as outside of the borders. When I was flying my B-52 bombers with 20 megatons of bombs strapped between my legs, I never really had as much animosity against the enemy, the purported enemy, as I have against many of the people that I've, and entities I've run up against here in this community. And by the way, I'm not going to talk about the terrible proliferation of pathetic career politicians that's permeating our community, and I'm not going to talk about the vote-stealing traitors today, and I'm also not going to talk about the dysfunctional Reno media. At any rate, that was not the media, ladies and gentlemen, but anyway, but it sort of sounded like them. At any rate, oh, by the way, I'm glad to see Mr. Kishel is back. He was not here last time. But that doesn't really matter, if you think about it. Mr. Kishel is just a member, another member of the city council. He has no more power, no more, he has a little bit more ambiance, maybe in his name, the mayor, but as far as anything pragmatically speaking of logic, he is no different than Mr. Dorch or Ms. Zadra or anybody else. He has no more strength or power than the rest. He goes down and he puts the flag up for people and signs these things and maybe marches in front of the band, but all he is is a figurehead. And I'm not trying to be critical of Mr. Kishel there, I'm just trying to make the point of the pragmatic, logical aspect that every member of that city council is the same as every other member. By the way, some people wonder if Sam ever gets anything done. Some people wonder if Sam has any pull in this community. Some people wonder if anybody respects Sam in this community. Well, because of the pathetic, oh, I wasn't going to talk about them, because of the pathetic media sphere of Sam Dene, you don't hear as much about what Sam has to say as he really has to say. Yesterday, Sam was instrumental, was instrumental in the hiring of a new county manager, one of the most important positions in the community. Sam Dene was actually more than instrumental, he was, he was the person who got Mr. John Slaughter selected as the new county manager. Why do I say that? Because Sam was the only person, the only citizen who went to the podium and told the county commission to hire that man. And by the way, if you reflect back a year or so ago, Sam was the only person who ever came to the podium and recommended the Reno city manager. And surely you were obeying Sam's command to hire Mr. Klinger. Oh, there might have been just a tiny bit of sarcasm in my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements and then one staff recognition that I wanted to do. The first announcement is I want to remind everyone about the inaugural Nevada Wolfpack March from the Arch, that will be held in downtown Reno at 7:30 this Friday, October 25th. The city of Reno is proud to be one of the many local sponsors of the March from the Arch. Our mayor will be there to lead off the parade, as well as our council members. We encourage city employees and our community to join the march up Virginia Street to the university's historic quad for a pep rally, carnival, and lighting of the wolf, all to cheer on the Nevada Wolfpack as they take on the UNLV Rebels at Mackey Stadium on Saturday. Second announcement is, in the spirit of being more environmentally friendly, the city of Reno is starting a new tradition with a permanent holiday tree. This afternoon at 3 o'clock, Reno's Parks and Rec Department will be planting a live 23-foot-tall giant sequoia tree on the turf area across the street at City Plaza. We will then have our annual holiday tree lighting event on Tuesday, November 26th at 5:00 PM. Mr. Mayor and council, at this time, I wanted to recognize one of our excellent employees, Claudia Hansen. I am pleased to announce that I received a letter from Professor Craig Mebust from TMCC commending Claudia Hansen, our planning manager in the Community Development Department. Claudia made a presentation to his class studying architecture, construction for designers and planners. In his letter, the professor states that the class project required the students to research the Midtown District and to specifically design a layout for the Sticks site at the intersection of South Virginia and Thomas Streets. The class met with Claudia, and she reviewed the city of Reno land use table and design standards with them, made an outstanding and informative presentation while actively engaging the students. She also provided handouts and clarified issues that may have gone unresolved without her willingness to interact with the students. Her expertise in dealing with planning issues in her presentation made a positive impact on future architects, designers, and planners enrolled at TMCC. So I want to thank Claudia for those efforts. And I also have, Claudia, if you would come up, I also have a Nevada Wolfpack shirt. That's it, Mr. Mayor?
You're going to tell them we're going to do Wolfpack Fridays from now on, instead of casual Fridays throughout the city?
Wolfpack Fridays. Every Friday, we've been, we have the Nevada Wolfpack shirts, have the city of Reno logo on the sleeve, and we encourage all employees to wear their Wolfpack shirts. We are selling them to the employees on the 15th floor, they can come up and buy them for $15.
And we're hoping the rest of the citizens in town will observe Wolfpack Fridays?
Yeah.
And wear Wolfpack colors or Wolfpack-
I think you challenged the rest of them to do that.
Yes, sir, and we're going to do more of it. All right, now, before we go to approval of the agenda, there are no items pulled. Proclamations, item C1, C2, and C3. Presentations, will it be item D1, D2, and D3? There will be a public hearing. Hearing on items F1 and item F2, auction of and lease of office space in Midtown District. There will be a public hearing this evening at 6:00 PM, the gaslight special use permit. And then we will have, we will hear after the consent agenda, item J1. We will have item J1 after the consent agenda. Any other discussion or anything changes? Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for October the 9th. Motion? Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye. About no cash dispersments? Any disclosures? Chair will entertain a motion for approval. Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclamations, item C1. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know some of you probably have the same question that I just got a positive affirmation from. When we've made this proclamation in the past, we've always had a wonderful couple here who have celebrated this with us. I mean, he is a survivor of pancreatic cancer, and he's not here today for a good reason. He's on a, he's on a cruise, correct?
He's on a big vacation.
A big vacation, so no worries to be had there. Whereas in 2013, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 38,460 will die from the disease, with approximately 350 of those right here in Nevada. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits of just 6%. And when the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually in the late stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas the incidence of death and the death rate from pancreatic cancer are increasing, and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second-leading cause of cancer death in the United States by 2020. And whereas the United States Congress passed the, how do you say that, Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make more progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Reno and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Center and Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the Reno area support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And the good health and well-being of residents of Reno are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now, therefore, we and Robert A. Kishel, Sr., the mayor of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And we have Denise Wiley, who is the nurse navigator at renown for the pancre- And we have Denise Wiley, who is the nurse navigator at renown for the pancreatic cancer and oncology.
Thank you. Thank you. Safe to go. Thanks. Thank you very much. The support of people like you and bodies like this is extremely important in helping to promote awareness. We don't have good screening methods yet for pancreatic cancer, and that's why it's so important to promote awareness, to help our understanding and get research funding so that we can hopefully come up for a cure for this horribly aggressive cancer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Next, we'll have proclamations declaring the week of October 28th through November 3rd as Reno Sparks Goes to College, Kristi Smith and Angie Pinkington.
Hi, Angie. Hi, Angie. It must be Krista. Krista, hi, thank you. How are you? All right. Thank you very much. The Washoe County School District Councilors, in cooperation with the Western Association for College Administration Counseling, will be holding their annual college fair from 12 to 4:00 PM on Sunday, November 3rd at the UNR Joe Crowley Student Union. And every year, over 2,500 students and parents attend this event to meet with administrative administration counselors from nearly 100 colleges and universities, and attend financial aid and college information workshops. And the purpose of the fair is to inspire our students to further their education and introduce them to the college search and selection process. And at the college fair, students and parents can speak directly to admission counselors, learn about college application and financial aid processes, and ask questions about degree programs and campus offerings. Therefore, we and Robert A. Koschel, senior mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby officially proclaim the week of October 28th through November 3rd as Reno Sparks Goes to College Week. Yay! Did you want to say something?
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how close I have to stand to this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. Many of you grew up here like I did, know the college fair's been around forever. It's become an incredible event that's housed up at the beautiful Joe Crowley Center. We take over the whole building, but we continue to try and broaden the event to encourage all kids to do some post-secondary education. So yes, we're calling it Reno Sparks Goes to College, but the true emphasis is just reminding our whole community that how important it is to not stop at high school, that they need to be moving on and doing some sort of post-secondary education so they can go out and become viable members of the community. So we appreciate your recognition. We, as high schools, are promoting the event throughout next week, and so we thank you for your time and the proclamation.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C3, proclamation declaring the month of October, Community Planning Month. Mr. Dorch.
Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation, make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Reno, Nevada. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Reno, Nevada, and extend our sincere appreciation for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Robert A. Koschel, senior mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 2013 as Community Planning Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of the entire APA board, including myself, Stacy Huggins, Andy Derling, and Teresa Evans, we just want to thank you for your continued support, as well as the planning commission, and probably most importantly, the community development staff, for helping to support APA and to make this place a great place to live, work, and to play. I also wanted to acknowledge that last week was our state APA conference held up in Tahoe, and your very own Councilman Delgado, who is not here today, was awarded the state Outstanding Elected Official Award.
Good job.
So be sure and pat him on the back the next time you see him and thank him for his hard work and dedication to the planning field. Thank you.
Identify yourself for the record.
And for the record, my name is Angela Foust.
Thank you very much. All right. This time, we'll go to presentations, item D1, Chief Pitts.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and council. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, I'd like Officer Tom Alaxa, Mr. Nolan, and Mr. Beatty to come forward, please. Looks like Mr. Beatty did not make it. He did indicate he may not be here on time, so. This is an opportunity for the men and women of the Reno Police Department to thank citizens for contributions they make to us and obviously our community. As you referenced, Mr. Lansbury's commitment on Monday morning, just after 7:15 AM at Sparks Middle School, he made a decision to stand up that something was much more important than his own life. And we have citizens that do these things each and every day. Unfortunately, we lost Mr. Lansbury in that incident on Monday. But Mr. Jerry Nolan, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, a chief's commendation is presented to you, sir. On August 7th of this year, Mr. Nolan, or Nolan, excuse me, observed two Reno police officers in a physical altercation with a suspect. Without hesitation, he jumped into the fray, assisting these officers in immobilizing this man and taking him in custody. With the assistance of Mr. Nolan, it is possible that these officers would have, it was possible they would have sustained an injury and possibly a serious one. Mr. Nolan is credit to our community and is committed for his selfless act this day supporting these two men, one of them being Officer Tom Alaxa. His actions exemplified excellence and brought honor to himself, the Reno Police Department, and the City of Reno. And with that, I'll present this certificate to him, and he may have some comments, and I know that Officer Tom Alaxa has a few. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Honorable mayor, members of the Reno City Council, the mayor and I have at least three things in common. We both spent some time in Texas. We both worked for a major company, one word, recognizable around the world. And we both have been accused of speaking funny. And I plead guilty. I was born in Tennessee. I grew up in Texas, and that's why The Voice is what it is. The company we worked for sent me to a voice school, but it didn't work. And I've got a few things to say, very few. I grew up around Buford Pusser. I grew up around Fred Thompson in Tennessee. Buford Pusser, they made a movie about him called Walking Tall. He was a huge man. Two things stand out about Buford Pusser. He had a very soft voice, and he had the world's largest hands that I've ever seen. And if you met him, you would know exactly what I'm talking about. Fred Thompson, of course, served as Senator for the United States in 2008. He tried for the Republican nomination, and it's just good to see him on TV a lot. I say that to say this. I grew up with an innate respect for law enforcement, for law and order. My dad was a Marine, World War II, Iwo Jima, Okinawa, Saipan, Wake, and Guam. And he had a chestful of Purple Hearts. And he gave us values as his four children that carry with us hopefully still today. My greatest philosopher that I admire once said, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall see God." These officers, others here, go out to protect and serve every night. They are peacemakers. And that resonates with me. In my adult life, I worked in the Arabian Peninsula. I've worked in the old USSR. I've interfaced with lots of security professionals. I have never known any municipality in the world that has a finer police department than the Reno Police Department. And if I could tell you specifics that I've been involved in, I've taken too much time already. All I can say is they help us every night. The guy I helped with is very lucky. I used to weigh 400 pounds, and if I fell on him then, it would hurt twice as much. That's all. Thank you, friend. Yeah, thank you, hon. Honorable mayor, manager, city council, I wish our community was free of violence and evil, and, but we can't put our heads in the sand and pretend that it's not. The citizens of this city, the common man, when he comes across acts of violence in his presence, is faced with the choice to either be a good witness or to run and protect yourself. Jerry chose neither of those options, did, followed his gut, and helped the officers out and did the right thing. And his actions are uncommon and are certainly worthy of the recognition of this council and myself personally and my chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Item D2, Economic Development Update, Barry Schuster.
Mr. Mayor and council members, for the record, Bill Thomas, assistant city manager. Before Ms. Schuster comes up here, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One of them is to remind ourselves, as well as to let the public know, why we have this item on the agenda each and every council meeting, and that is, we all know there's some wonderful things that happen in our community that don't typically get attention or are not done in a forum where people are aware of them. In addition, we know this is a great and dynamic community, and we have a wonderful economy that sometimes doesn't get recognized. So that's the purpose for this item. This afternoon, we'd like to invite up a very active and a long-term resident of the community who is going to explain to you some business venture, a recent business venture that she started and her success, and we welcome Barry Schuster to the podium.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. I don't really have anything prepared to say. I was asked to come and been busy running my restaurant. And I'm open to questions if you have any specific things that you would like to know about my recent business venture. I opened Cafe Deluxe on Wells Avenue about three months ago, and it's definitely one of the most courageous things I've ever set out to do, but it's been a very successful business venture so far. It really did open my eyes to a lot of things, namely the struggles that small business owners go through, the hurdles that they have to overcome, the huge learning curve that they have to overcome just to actually get the doors open. And once I went through the process, I really had a much bigger appreciation for small business owners and restaurant owners, too. There's a lot that goes into it. I do want to commend the city staff and especially Fred Ternier for really kind of helping me navigate through the process. There's really no handbook on it. A lot of it is learning by your mistakes and sometimes costly mistakes. I think that my opening a business on Wells Avenue is kind of a natural evolution of my work in the community. I've done a lot of work to improve my neighborhood. I moved into the Wells Avenue neighborhood about 10 years ago, and a lot of people at that time said, "Am I going to be safe parking on the street and walking to your house?" And I thought, wow, you know, this neighborhood has really suffered from a bad reputation. But I've been part of kind of a process of the community coming together and working on the neighborhood. And the, as a Realtor, which I have been for the last 10 years also, I've seen the public's perception of the neighborhood turn around drastically, and I've sold a lot of homes in that neighborhood to homeowners. So it's definitely a neighborhood that's coming back around. So I think that my faith in opening a business in that neighborhood was kind of a natural next step in my involvement. Still, however, even when I was going to my business classes before I opened up, the instructors were very reluctant about my choice of location, and they said, "Are you sure you want to do something like this on Wells?" And it still really showed me how different neighborhoods can kind of be, become stigmatized, and it does take a lot to overcome that. But I've been very surprised to see the huge diversity in the customers that come through my door. For those of you who have been in there on any given day, you can see a lot of senior citizens, a lot of people who are seeking alternative diets, and then just people from the neighborhood come and all eat under one roof. It's an incredibly diverse customer base that I have, and I think that's the most rewarding thing. And, you know, the Wells Avenue neighborhood was once a very prominent neighborhood in the city, and in fact, shortly after World War II, a third of all of the schoolchildren in Reno lived within two blocks of Wells Avenue. So we have the aging population in Reno who have fond memories of the neighborhood, and when they come through the door, they want to talk about their experience growing up in the neighborhood. It's really a fun thing. So it's a lot more than just opening a restaurant, and this restaurant wouldn't exist anywhere other than on Wells Avenue where it is. It wouldn't be the same in any other neighborhood. So it's not just a restaurant. It's kind of a gathering place for the community, and so I'm still kind of, you know, it's only been three months since I opened the doors, and restaurants typically struggle for several years before they get off the ground. But just with the help that I was given by the property owner, some tenant improvements that they did for me, I was so impressed with how other businesses reached out to help me. Silver Peak were so supportive. They established their business in the Wells Avenue neighborhood on Wonder Street many, many years ago, and they were just so incredibly helpful to me in many, many ways. The owners of The Brewer's Cabinet, Old Bridge Pub, Legends, and Sierra Tap House, they started a fund, saving nickels from the sale of all their menu items, and the purpose of that was to create a loan for a small business. And so I was awarded that, as that was the first ever recipient of that. So it was really a good experience overall. Everything that I went through, but certainly I did learn a lot of the things that could be improved on a city level in order to make it easier because it was extremely, there were times that were extremely difficult. But I would say overall, it's been a really good experience, and I'm just going to keep it going. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add that she was featured in the Gazette Journal for the two... two people dining for under $20, and they gave you huge accolades, and they're looking forward to coming back, and I hope everyone here does as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Barry, really quickly, congratulations. I know how difficult that is, and I have to tell you, I've been in your business several times, and it's just, I love seeing you thrive. And when I was in there, it was, you know, it was packed. But maybe give us a little bit of history about that building.
Yeah. Deluxe Laundry was put, that building was actually built in 1950, but the laundry existed prior to that building being built. Back before the invention of the automatic washer and dryer for home use, people had to take their laundry to get done. And after World War II, when automobile travel increased substantially, the motor courts or motels were very popular, and none of them had onsite laundry facilities. So places like Deluxe Laundry did all of the sheets and towels for all the motels along Fourth Street and along Virginia Street. So this was a booming business, and it was actually opened by Martin Etcheteau, who was an illiterate French Basque immigrant, and he had run a French laundry before. So he opened his first location on Locust Street, and then when he became so successful in 1950 that he was actually able to build a larger facility, he built the 10,000 square foot facility at 1690 Wells Avenue. There was no north or south Wells at that time because North Wells was Alameda. And he ran that business until he retired in 1967, and he was just torn about who he should sell the business to or who he should give the business to because he had built it through so much hard work. And so he knew there was only one person who could appreciate what it had taken for him to open that, and that was his employee, Rosa Colbet. And she had worked for him since he first opened the laundry on Locust. And so he sold it to her for $10 down, and she made payments to him for 20 years, and her family ran the laundry until 2005. So it's a great story. Yeah.
Now, would you, didn't you, you were awarded $10,000?
It was a $20,000 loan. It wasn't a grant, so I am repaying it. Yeah.
But actually, it's such an idea to revitalize that neighborhood and be so proud.
Thank you. Yeah, and the building does mean a lot to a lot of people because people that walk in the door, they say, oh, I watched this building for so many years, I was so afraid it was going to get torn down, and I loved it so much. So it's kind of a morale boost, I think, to the neighborhood, so.
Mary, I do have a question, and thank you for taking the leap. You mentioned something, though, and of course, small business is the backbone and lifeblood of any economic vibrancy in any neighborhood. You did mention, though, that there were some difficulties with the process. So I would just ask if staff could, coming from someone who, first time, new and going through it with fresh eyes, certainly getting your feedback. You know, it's, I believe, our job to remove barriers and make things as easy and simple and fluid as possible. So if someone could, staff, could get with you and do some bullet points on where the hiccups were and any of the problems, so we could maybe work through those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to item D3, Danae Evans. I want to correct something. Danae is not from Purdue, Marion and Associates as are listed on the agenda.
Thank you so much for having us. My name is Danae Evans. I'm the Executive Director of Energy Fit Nevada. Today I have with me Paul Thompson. He is the new Energy Director for the Governor's Office of Energy. Very excited to have him here with us today. We are here to talk to you about Energy Fit Nevada during National Energy Awareness Month and really share with you the benefits that energy efficiency has on both the city of Reno and the state itself. We were here about a year ago, last October, where we had the proclamation, we really want to come back and share with you what we were able to accomplish in that time specifically in the city of Reno. Energy Fit Nevada is the state sponsor of Home Performance with Energy Star. That is a Department of Energy program. We work with them and the State Energy Office. The Governor's Office of Energy is specifically tasked with working with local communities and businesses to lead the nation in renewable energy production, energy exportation, and energy efficiency and conservation. That last bullet point is where Energy Fit Nevada comes in and is a critical component of helping to infuse more than $1.9 million into the state's economy and help residents save 20% or more off their energy bills so far under the program. In front of you, you do have our economic report that we, in partnership, were able to commission with a local economic firm, and it really talks to you of the benefits, not only dollar-wise, the economic impact that it can have, but also the health impact that it can have on our community. When we're creating healthier homes, there's less healthcare cost to that, which improves the quality of life and reduce our overall costs. We have partnered with both, actually, all of the municipalities in the state, specifically City of Reno, University of Nevada Reno, Truckee Meadows Community College, and I was told not to mention UNLV. So it's part of our goal, if you're reading through the report, looking to really continue doing what we're doing by 2025, helping to make an economic impact of about $220 million and saving $325 million in energy consumption by the year 2025. So overall, we have a really big opportunity here. We are looking forward to continue working with the city, hopefully come back next year and present even bigger numbers. So far, through the whole program statewide, we've done 1,325 people who have called to find out about the program, sign up for information. 732 people have completed what we call an energy assessment, and unfortunately, she's not here, but Jenny did work with us and had an energy assessment done on her home and actually allowed the media in there so we could really share with the residents what happens during that. And then 420 homes have been upgraded to achieve at least a 20% energy savings. Of those numbers, specifically, I'm very excited to share that 277 of the signups came from City of Reno, 191 energy assessments were done by residents of Reno, and lastly, 99 homes have been upgraded here in the city. If we take those numbers on a rough, that's $60,000 of energy savings to your local residents. And while that is on an annual basis, if we look at that long-term, that grows each year because that savings continues on, and hopefully next year we'll be tripling those numbers of what we've done. Just to give you an idea, the energy assessment goes in, if you want to look up that news story of Jenny's house, it was, we go in and diagnose the home to show you where it can improve its efficiency. We let you choose what you'd like to do and to improve that, and our organization inspects that to make sure it was done to a quality standard. This isn't the normal way we've been building houses. This is a new way to go about it, which references another effort going on at the Energy Office. We're looking to increase the building codes, the International Energy Conservation Code, and just improve the way we build our homes so that they are more efficient and more healthy homes. And then lastly, we come back and verify with that same diagnostic test to verify the home actually is performing the way that we thought that it was. So we're actually measuring and verifying that what we're doing is effective for the homeowners. Through this work, we do have, I have with me also some of our staff members, Neil and Aaron, and then we have one of our contractor partners, Yvette is in the audience with us. So if we take just the number of homes that have been done in Reno with our average job costs, it's about a half a million dollars in work to local contractors to increase, to make homes more energy efficient and healthy. So overall, we've got lots of different impacts, referencing back to economic impact. We're just very excited that we've been able to partner. You did declare Energy Fit Awareness Month last year. This year, we just wanted to share the results, and we really appreciate participation, your support. We would encourage all of you to move forward, talk to Jenny about her experience, and encourage any of your constituents and residents to participate in the program. Last exciting part, we do provide rebates and financing to help homeowners go through the process. So currently, you can get up to $1,000 rebate to offset the cost, and we do offer financing as well, that's through a local, through Nevada State Bank, at 2.3%, which is free money. So again, you can go to our website, it's energyfitnevada.org. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to talk with you and see what we can do to help get this message out to your own constituents and residents of Reno. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go to item consent agenda. Any item you go before? E15?
Mr. Mayor, E5 and E17.
And I'll be very brief. We have the consent agenda here for those who, folks who don't know, it's a situation where they're going to vote on about 15 items without any discussion, except a few of the items were pulled. But I think there are some things on here that should see the light of day. For instance, and maybe even an explanation, they're going to spend some money buying, they're going to spend some money to purchase weapons of mass destruction equipment. Sounds rather ominous. Maybe somebody might want to know what that meant, if anybody's even reading the consent agenda. Secondly, there is an acceptance of a grant award, and this should see the light of day, of $150,000 for the Police Department for various equipment and training. Some of these things would never see the light of day, $150,000. And here's one that doesn't have the amount of money on an approval of, and I'm not speaking for or against any of this, but there's an approval of a license agreement for adjustment of utilities with Isaiah Group for the Virginia Street Bridge Project. It would be nice to know how much is being spent on that. And there's a few other items, but the other thing that kind of catches my eye is this, there's been quite a brouhaha about the parking meter fiasco that Sam warned you about 10 years ago and eight years ago and five years ago. And all through the years of my being down here overseeing this stuff, this parking meter operation became a gigantic fiasco and still is for that matter. I noticed that you've actually put some of the old, put your money in the meters back up, which I, and he's nodding his head, and I suggested, don't take them down in the first place. Now there's some sort of a settlement going down, and I read the, it doesn't tell the amount on here, so I went out there and read the staff report, the little tiny staff report says that Reno is going to receive $7,500 from these folks who've been working on the parking kiosk computerized doodads. And I'm just wondering, it would seem like this situation cost Reno a lot more, the Reno citizens, I should say, cost the Reno citizens a lot more, just the trepidation of not even wanting to come downtown to park or looking for a place where you weren't afraid to park because you didn't know if it was going to take your money and never give it back, charge you for things you weren't doing. At any rate, I don't know how it came out to be measly, and I see it's a mediation, settlement, whatever. I still don't know how it came out to be a measly $7,500 because in my estimation, this cost the city of Reno a lot more, the citizens of Reno, a lot more than $7,500. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining items other than the ones that were pulled, but I would just like to make a comment on item E16, which is the settlement. Just because Mr. Danae had something to say and we had public comment earlier, I think our negotiating team did a very good job on getting us to this point with this settlement. And I think everyone needs to keep in mind that this was an LLC that really had no assets left. So there was really nothing left to go after, or we would have. But at the end of the day, it was a limited liability company that had no assets left. The bank had came in and repossessed the kiosk, to my understanding, and there was nothing left to go after it. I think the $7,000 or so was all that was left to go after, and I mean, that's what we ended up getting, and unfortunately, that's where we were at, so.
Can I have a brief response to that since it's my issue?
No, sir. No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I apologize for my tardiness. May I request that some items be pulled as well?
Which one?
E4, E7, E9, and E15.
E4, E7?
E4, 7. E9.
E9. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, my motion would be the remaining items after those items were pulled.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Edron, E15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that this has had, this parcel has had a long history with us, and I'm very satisfied and excited to see that we indeed received a market reasonable offer on it. And obviously, the history has been spelled out. This is part of kind of a domino plan, structured plan, to accommodate a fire station out in the southernmost part of the city and the sales from this parcel that were at one time considered to be an appropriate location for fire services. And long after, or actually shortly thereafter, was determined it was not an appropriate location, and that determination was made not only by our own operations from the fire chief and the professionals that run that area, but also from services that we paid for evaluations for our standards of coverage and whatnot that also identified inappropriate location for a fire station. So I want to say to staff from legal through the entire operation, this has, again, been a very long process, and I appreciate all of your efforts and the tremendous due diligence that you've applied to it. And I think that the offer, as you noted in the report, is solid and would recommend and actually move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Okay. Have a motion, or for that, a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, discussion.
I just, I had to just have a question. When was this property purchased and for how much?
It wasn't purchased, it was given to us in a zoning or master plan.
Tracy J. Reno City Attorney's Office. It was part of the South Meadows PUD, and there was a fire station agreement associated with that. And then we took it through the PUD process to amend it, and this fire station itself was no longer needed. And so we paid no money for it. It was collateral that the city took back into its arsenal and were able to sell it.
Question for Ms. Miles, it's Mr. Manager. This parcel, the proceeds are going to go to pay down the bond, the Downtown Event Center bond that has the role in for the fire station?
No. This parcel will be, the proceeds will go toward the fees for the new fire station over on Damone Ranch and Veterans.
So it goes to build the construction? Okay, okay, that's, my memory is now revisited. Thank you.
Okay, have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E4?
This is a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. It looks like a reoccurring one that is kind of given regionally to us, and then we split some proceeds with other law enforcement entities. I'm wondering how the split is determined because Reno gets 40%, Washoe 20%, and actually, it doesn't say what Sparks gets. I guess they get, no, no, no. Reno gets 40, Washoe County unincorporated gets 40, and Sparks gets 20. But Reno's 53% of the Wat County population, so just wondering how we come to those numbers.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. The 40-40-20 split was agreed upon two previous administrations to mine with a previous sheriff and actually a previous chief of police at Reno and the Sparks Police Department. And what they do, Ms. Brockus, is they take UCR calculations. Our numbers are usually higher, obviously, than the Sheriff's Department and Sparks, and we have retained this split because we're trying to work collectively more effectively together. And I have to tell you that if we, I think that if I approached the sheriff and said, look, we want 60, we'll give you 20 and 20, I think we would end up not collaborating on as many things that we've worked on in the last three or four years as we are today.
I understand that, but, you know, times are different. Our budget is our primary consideration. And, I mean, I do, you know, maybe there is some rationale on the way the dollars will be spent out because the county, of course, does have the... have the, you know, the jail facility. Um, so maybe just if we could have an analysis of how the dollars will be spent out and see, you know, if the county sheriff is doing these other regional sort of activities, that's fine. But, uh, with fifty-three percent in the major downtown, we're, we're a busy force. And so, you know, when we can beef up our budget, I would think that we'd wanna look at it from that perspective. My other question is, um, one related to overtime. On this grant and a lot of the other ones, I see overtime included in. And I, and I get that, because the concept is that the overtime allows us to do perhaps strategic sort of initiatives that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise with our, um, you know, our budget. But, um, how does that overtime calculate in terms of what our other long-term obligations are, um, to the employee, our employee costs? And what I'm getting at is, I, I know, you know, say we've got a hundred and forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars we're gonna do, and say, you know, fifty thousand in overtime, that pays that overtime at that point, but aren't there other costs associated with overtime that come in later? And is there some calculative measure that, you know, comes from this grant to help pay for, um, and, and here's where I need some help, is if, if our retirement, um, is retirement calculations based upon overtime earnings also?
If a person's retiring in the PERS system?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so...
That will be calculated.
Are we somehow throwing in, when we do overtime, these other costs, rather than just the dollar amount for that pay period to that employee for overtime? That's, that's what I'm trying to get at on these grants.
I, I believe, and I think I need to correct the chief, overtime is not PERS compensable. It is not.
Okay.
It is not.
Callback is.
Yeah.
Callback pay is PERS compensable, but overtime pay is not.
Okay. 'Cause what I'm wondering is, on these grants, if we are increasing, I mean, these grants are great, 'cause they supplement our budget. But if they're also increasing some costs that we're not accounting for now, that's what I'm trying to determine.
Well, I think if, with, with Mr. Klinger's permission, I'd like to meet with you so I can get a, a really good scope of what you need, ma'am. Because obviously, these grants have been redu, reduced significantly since two thousand eight, and we're using these to capitalize on things we wanna get done in the community. And so I, I really need some clear direction on, on, I really need where the council wants to go as a body. And, and some of your ideas, I'd like to get those, so I can sit down and talk with the sheriff and the chief of Sparks.
Well, I mean, how, how about, you know, this is a grant going forward, right? 'Cause it's twenty thirteen if...
You're approving that, yes, ma'am.
Is it on the, what fiscal calendar are we on, on this? The, the federal government?
This is thirteen fourteen.
Thirteen fourteen?
Yes, ma'am.
So you've already, can you maybe, can we maybe approve with a, a request that you come and allocate, show us how the money, the Reno share is being allocated, and the county share?
Uh, what I can do is show you historically what we've done.
Okay.
But if this money is now in, in place, and we're gonna utilize it over the next fiscal year, I could give you some areas that we've utilized previously consistently. Does that make sense?
Okay, that would be good. I would find that useful. Thank you. So I'll make the motion, that we do that with a memo, come forward, looking maybe three years back on how both us and Wausau County have allocated these resources. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion, second. Just get, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Item E five, Ms. Jordan.
Chief, thank you. Um, first off, I, I'm glad to see that JTNN is, uh, giving this thirteen thousand dollar annual grant to work for, uh, combating underage drinking during some of the pub crawls. My que, my question is this, um, when we go to the special events, um, meeting, and we're discussing with the event organizer their city-related expenses, these kind of underage drinking stings or operations or...
Yes, ma'am.
...identifications, those happen at the, these kinds of special events, um, historically? Anyway, right?
Uh, for the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. It's kind of a two-part question, ma'am. We'll run some of these pre-event, uh, maybe a week in advance. Uh, if we have hot August nights, we want to run a sting, we'll run it pre-event. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Uh, so we can calculate some numbers, maybe reduce those type, types of alcohol-related problems. But we will also run them during the event. So they're, they're actually running in, in, in those two situations. So it just depends on, on what's on the calendar for us.
Okay. So the costs associated with these kinds of efforts are then, at least in part, passed through to the event organizers, correct? Alexis Hill is here, maybe she can...
Yeah, Alexis is here, I believe. I know she is, Alexis.
Oh, she's right in the front row.
The, uh, JTNN, uh, underage stings are not covered by the promoter. That's part of what, either the costs of doing business for the city, or what is, um, the, or the grant funds are utilized for that. But also to clarify, most of our pub crawls are not required a special event permit in the city of Reno. We only require them for street closures or for park rentals, if they add on that element to their event. So...
Okay, but with regards to law enforcement support, so what I'm trying to get at is, let's say you've got the, the zombie crawl, and we did an estimation of what the police costs associated with, um, policing the zombie crawl was going to be. Is a portion of that, that we quoted to them, the activities that now may be offset by some of the JTNN? Are, and are we gonna take that number into consideration going forward with special event organizers?
They, we are not, we do not quote those numbers to them. That is a set, we look at that as a separate activity that does not relate to...
It doesn't get passed through to the event organizers?
No.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, ma'am, and, and counsel, Mr. Mayor, also the work we do at CSAS with Alex Woodley, pre-event, we may use some, some of these funds for education and early intervention, so. Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Motion. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B nine. B seven? Yeah, B seven.
Uh, that, that was one I had. I have a question about this. This appears to be a, uh, fund policy, um, revision related to a, a fund policy we have for, um, uh, reimbursement, uh, to, um, an entity for some drainage maintenance that they do, um, related to kind of a, the way some development in the southeast Truckee Meadows occurred. My, my question about this is, um, in the last week, a copy of a lawsuit filing, um, that the city attorney's office has, has filed, related to a drainage maintenance agreement, landed on my desk. I hadn't, I didn't know we were in a dispute with this entity, and now we're in litigation. But the question is, when I looked at the maps of that lawsuit and this, it seems like, are they in the same area?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, they are close, but not the same.
Okay.
Um, and the difference between the two is, in this case, the work's been done. We are basically the third party collecting the money to reimburse the party that put the drainage improvements in. Um, whereas in the other one that you referenced, I believe, work was to be done, but it wasn't done. And so that was the purpose of the litigation.
Okay.
So factually, they're very different in, uh...
Okay, geographically, they're exclusive, but factually, that other one is ongoing maintenance. This is more like, um...
It's more of a reimbursement. The work is done.
Okay. So not ongo, so who's maintaining these improvements ongoing? Us?
For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. Uh, in answer to your question, Councilmember Brackus, the, um, work that's being, this, this is for improvements that occurred, and so when development occurs and, and there's a, there's a fee that's paid as part of that development, and that was, that's what this reimbursement is for.
Okay.
As far as who's doing the actual maintenance on this, there is a company that's been hired by the, uh, there's some drainage fees that are paid ongoing, like a homeowners association type fees, that are paid for drainage, and that's how the maintenance is being done. It is not being done by the city.
Okay, okay. So this is infrastructure. And then my other question, thank you for that, Mr. Flansford. Um, there is a discussion in here that this was land that the city more or less annexed once the county had entitled it, and the town, cap, and the city through that annexation assumed the development agreement that's in place with the county, became a party to that development agreement, and that's what this is all pursuant to. Um, do you know the terms of that development agreement? And do you also know if, um, my recollection, I, I just got my book, I haven't had a chance to check it, is the development agreements have to come before the local governing body every year for kind of a report? Have we been doing that? Or do you know the status of this development agreement and the reporting obligations, and, um, when it expires, most importantly?
Um, I do not know off the top of my head when it expires, nor do I know off the top of my head all the details that are in it. Um, I do know that we do not regularly come forward with, um, a, the council report annually, but I will check into that to see if, in fact, we should be doing that.
I think we need to, because, um, I, I think that's a requirement. And we only have two development agreements, this one and the Meadowwood Mall one, but it seems like, um, you know, I don't know if we're in compliance.
If that's what needs to be done, we'll start doing that if we haven't been.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. B nine. E nine.
E nine. That was, uh, mine. My question about this one is, this is one in a series of, um, uh, adjustment utilities associated with the, um, Virginia Street Bridge Project. But is this utility company already there? It appears like they just wanna, they're coming in new. Is that what it is going on?
For the record, Cheryl Lahoney, Public Works, um, they are already, um, there. Um, they are in AT&amp;T conduits right now that they're leasing from AT&amp;T. So this, eh, part of this is for them to have their own conduits, and that's what they're paying for, part of what they're paying for.
Okay. So they're, uh, so they were in, they're in, they've got six hundred and eighty-four feet, linear feet of conduit. Um, how did they get in? Did we have an agreement, or does our agreement with AT&amp;T allow AT&amp;T to put anyone into their conduit? How, how does that work?
That's, um, I, I don't have an answer for that.
I guess, you know, and I brought this up at each of these, is, I think we're getting, what, eighty-seven dollars a year for six hundred and eighty feet of conduit?
Correct. That is the, the license agreement.
And since this is a new agreement that we have for the first time with this party, how do we come out, come out with that calculation of what we're gonna be paid for the privilege of them using our right-of-way?
Um, this isn't actually the first agreement that we have with, with this company. This is probably the five or fifth or sixth agreement that we have with this company. They have facilities located in other parts of town that are their own facilities. Um, the, it's based on, uh, land value, and then there's a formula that, that you apply to it.
Who, um, who does that work? Is it something that they just show to us for this one? Or is it something that we have an expert who kinda looks and lets us know that we're getting, you know, reasonable compensation for allowing people to use our right-of-way for their place of business?
We set that value ourselves, based on appraised value of the land.
Okay.
And the square footage.
Okay, and you have recent appraisals on that?
Correct.
Okay. Well, if I could see one of those appraisals, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
Second.
No, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Uh, E fif, oops, E fifteen, we've already done. J, uh, seventeen.
E seven.
E seventeen?
E seventeen.
Yeah, J, it's your name, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
E seventeen.
It's all good. Um, I just, I had a question about this. First off, um, any opportunity to promote the March from the Arch and Wolf Pack Fridays, I will grab the mic at any opportunity to promote that. But, um, with regards to the donation of the flags for the city vehicles, not only for the March from the Arch, but for every Friday, that came from Silver and Blue Outfitters, correct?
That came from the AS, uh, Alexis Hill City Manager's Office, for the record. That came from the ASUN Student Store. And I'm not sure if they're affiliated with Silver and Blue.
They are.
There's, there's, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure if, who they had come from got publicly, um, acknowledged and thanked for that. But, um, anyway, that was the only question that I had, and I'm looking forward to Friday.
Great. Thank you.
So they're gonna be putting these on, uh, all of our vehicles?
They'll be dropping them off at the courtyard, and each department will be responsible for picking them up and putting them on their vehicles.
Let's make sure they're on by Friday.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved and approved.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to public hearings, item F one. Madam Secretary, have all the sent notices been sent? Oops, excuse me. Before we do, we, we were gonna do item J one. Excuse me. Item J one.
Oops, not me. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Lee Gibson with the Regional Transportation Commission of Wausau County. Um, today, we're before you for the approval of our inter-local cooperative agreement. This is the annual agreement we go through that implements our program of projects that has been approved by the RTC, authorized by the county, according to NRS three seventy-three one forty. Uh, today, what we're gonna do, I'm gonna let Jeff Hale walk you through the projects that will begin construction, uh, this year throughout the region, and then we'll be happy to take any questions regarding this, uh, item that the, uh, council may have. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I, I just have a few quick slides here to highlight some of the, uh, some of the major projects that are contained within this agreement. And then, once I'm done, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Uh, no, not that one. There we go. This agreement includes two point nine million on, uh, Avenida de Londa, Gentry, and Second Street in Mayberry. Those will be pavement reconstruction projects where we reconstruct the, the base and surfacing, include, uh, sidewalk and, uh, curb and gutter. We also have nine point five mil, nine point four million dollars in our preventative and corrective maintenance. Um, this is significant, because this includes our mill and overlay and our story seal work. Um, this is where we're spending about forty cents a square foot to maintain the system versus the, the six, seven, eight dollars that we're spending a square foot on the, on the projects listed above. Uh, it's a hundred and eighty-three million in fourteen, sixty-seven, and fifteen, for a total of about two hundred and fifty million dollars in the region that we're, uh, doing in, in the map and in your package. You can see the, the street and project descriptions, um, where we have this work going on. Um, Avenida de Londa was a project that needed reconstruction last year, but we had to defer it so we could get sewer line work included on the Plum Lane Project, which is ongoing right now. Hopefully, incidentally, we'll be able to get that project done by the end of the year. SNC's pushing real hard to get it done. This agreement does include full funding for the remaining part of the Veterans Parkway or Southeast Connector. It includes, uh, the remaining Southeast McCarron work, which is from the Miraloma area up to, uh, and actually, noise walls back to Longley Lane, but adding a lane each way on Southeast McCarron from, uh, Miraloma up to Greg Street. And then we have, uh, some final design for Fourth and Prater, and then we're increasing some funding, about seventy thousand dollars, uh, so we can, uh, complete the Plumas Street sidewalks. Now, we do work very closely with the Reno, uh, Public Works Department, in addition to the other Public Works staff. Um, they're instrumental in developing the program that we incorporate into this agreement every year. Um, we work closely with them through the program development in this effort, and then through preliminary and final design. And then as we're delivering the project, they're out there working with us, making sure that, that their needs are met. And at the end of the, end of the job, city can walk through and approve it, and, uh, we have a quality product. Um, that's really all I have as far as presenting on the highlights. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at this time? Ms. Brackus, you have a question?
I have a few questions. Uh, first of all, let me ask you this. Um, on the Southeast Connector Phase One, the bridge, who is the project manager for that?
It's Garth Oxel.
But, no, no, no. The, the sponsoring, is it called the sponsoring entity? I'm just, I'm curious, 'cause I see the...
The project sponsor, or the, we're actually the project sponsor, the project owner.
RTC?
Yeah, it's our project.
Okay. So in the language of the inter-locals, each entity, how's the decision made? 'Cause I see in south, in our reworking of our Virginia Street Bridge, it looks like Reno staff is the project manager. How's that decision made of who is the project manager?
Well, I think, uh, ultimately, the Southeast Connector is a regional road priority that's emerged through our RTP process. Um, and so we're sponsoring that project. The Virginia Street Bridge is a, is a locally sponsored project. Then, um, city of Reno has procured funding through, um, the Truckee Meadows Flood Authority, and then, uh, some bridge funds through NDOT with a little bit of RTC funding. So it's really a local project. As far as the decision, um, I think we're responsible for meeting the regional needs, and this is more of a, a local need on the Virginia Street Corridor.
Okay. And then, and another question about general finances of the RTC. Um, when someone goes to pay gas and buy a gallon of gas here in the, the region, how much of that, uh, tax ends, how many, how many cents of tax ends up with the RTC?
Uh, I believe it's about twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three cents a gallon. I believe it's about twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three cents a gallon.
Twenty-two cents. Gas is maybe what, right now?
Depends, 264 to 290, depending on what station.
Yeah, okay. But twen-
Yeah, you're off by a bond.
Okay.
Fifty cents.
But twenty-two cents is going to the RTC or so. Okay. And then most of this money that you're doing these projects with is the proceeds from what people pay at the tank, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I see on your cash and balance, that I've been watching over the last couple of years, that you have maybe 100 million dollars in cash and balances. And then I was looking at your CAFRA, so it looked like maybe you were paying 18% on debt coverage, but you have a huge cash and balance. We would dream of your cash and balance. How, are you, are you paying your debt out of some of that cash and balance, or do you have fuel tax coming in that then is paying your debt? Because it seems like you're sitting on a lot of money to do these projects, because those numbers are reflected. But I'm just wondering how that's working out.
Mr. Mayor, Lee Gibson again. Most of that cash which you see is, is the cash from bonds that have been sold, and they're going towards our projects like the Southeast Connector. So as we move forward, we'll be spending those down, and those balances will start declining.
Okay. So, but are you using some of that bond money that's sitting in your reserves to then pay debt?
We don't use bond reserves to pay debt. We use cash flow to pay debt. We use bond reserves to pay for the projects.
For the projects, okay. And the bonds that you use, were some of those energy, some of those federal bonds, did you take advantage of any of those stimulus?
There were some, there were some subsidies that were available during the period of the recession. Those were the, I believe it was the BiAmerica Bonds, and there's something else with a Z in there. Those are not, those are just a buy-down of the interest rate of the bond. They were not federal funds attached to the project.
And will those be used to pay for the Southeast Connector project?
Those bonds, those, those subsidies are used across all of our debt, and we use that, and we, we've been using that as sort of a financial management tool for all of the different bonds we have. We've sold four bonds to date, and we just use that as we go across the pay-down of each of those debt instruments.
Using those federal debt instruments, does that trigger a full NEPA?
No, it does not.
There's a categorical exemption out of that stimulus project?
We've talked to our lawyers about this. There's absolutely no relationship between those subsidies and any project funded through those subsidies. They are not federalized projects. To be a federalized project, you have to receive a grant, either through a contract authority, through the Federal Highway Administration, or a grant agreement from the FTA, where the project is spelled out in detail in the, in the federal funding instrument.
Okay. My, my other question, and it may be not for you all, but it may be for our staff, is the Southeast Connector, well, first of all, there's something in here called the North, that people are calling the Northeast Connector. You had an open house about it a couple of weeks ago. I went, it was the, it's a project that's in design. Tell me about that project, because I think you're calling it the-
That's the 395 Pyramid Connector project.
Yeah. But you're, you're, I mean, so you're in N, you're in design on that. No, you're in, you're in environmental on that.
That's correct.
But you're not, the amount that, you're not showing any money to be expended this year for this agreement.
That's right.
But the total fund program, or the proposed project estimates, what is that total project cost? Because for every other project, you're showing, so that, you know, people can know what the project cost is going to be. What is the Northeast Connector project cost going to be?
This is the Pyramid 395 Connector, not the Northeast Connector.
Yeah, yeah.
And the money that we show is money that was approved several years ago to fund the NEPA process. That's 8.2 million dollars roughly that we're using to fund NEPA. We don't have any money programmed for that through FY15. FY16 is probably the first year where we'll try to start funding some preliminary design as we get done with our NEPA process. We've identified about 400 million dollars, I believe, in the, in the, in the RTP that will be available in federal funding in the future.
Okay.
So as we get completed with the Southeast Connector, we'll begin to deliver some money towards design, right-of-way acquisition for the first phase of improvements in that project. That, that whole environmental document is going to span about, it's hard to say, roughly 800 million dollars worth of work. It'll be a phased rod, so we're not going to cover that whole thing under, yeah, yes.
Okay. But we're looking about, almost, you know, rough word of a, almost a billion-dollar project there. When it, how much of that is in Reno? When that gets into Reno, when it hits, comes out of Sun Valley, is that going through BLM land, or through land that the City of Reno is entitled and has development project, projects approved for, do you know?
We do have a little bit of BLM land, but, and then it goes in through the private, private property there in Sun Valley, through Sun Valley Boulevard, up over the hill, through the, through the Dandini area up there, and down into Par Boulevard, which that's, gets into the Reno city limits there. So we have private BLM county property, and then City Reno.
Okay. So, but it's just very preliminary, because we're not looking at any, spending any more money this year towards that billion-dollar project, it sounds like.
That's right.
Okay. But the Southeast Connector Phase Two, that's my question about that, is you've got 29 million previously proved, 111 million for this year for C and R, that's-
Construction and right-of-way.
Construction and right-of-way. How much will be construction? How much will be right-of-way? Is it acqui, it's a right-of-way acquisition, right?
That's correct. We think about, we're budgeting or planning about 130 to 150 million dollars for construction of the remaining Phase Two. And I believe the number is about 25 million dollars that we're estimating for the whole project. I'm not really sure how much we'll have in right-of-way acquisition that we haven't already spent. It's a little hard to say with the Butler property, the last remaining property that we have to buy, and I'm not sure, we haven't had that appraised yet, so I'm not sure what that value is estimated at.
Okay. So we're looking at maybe 25 million dollars of right-of-way acquisition from Mr. Butler, and that's-
No, no, for the entire project.
Oh, through the entire project?
Yes.
Okay. So, but you just have to get with Mr. Butler. And that brings up a question about process for me, is Southeast Connector Phase Two, are you familiar with NRS 278.0284 that requires conformity between the Reno Master Plan and Development Actions?
I-
Okay.
I'm not.
Well-
Director Gibson may be-
It's, it's been brought to my attention, just since I've been sitting on this body, that the Southeast Connector, or the Veterans Parkway, whatever you call it, was not in the Reno Master Plan. In 1999, there was a decision by the City Council to pull it out of the Reno Master Plan. So, the Master Plan is silent on this road project. Furthermore, when you read the Butler Ranch PUD, which is the Master Plan for that PUD, it states that Veterans Parkway is fully the responsibility of the Butlers to construct. And so, we have two Master Plan components, one in our general roadway section of our Master Plan, one in the Butler Ranch PUD, that are in opposition to going ahead with a project like this. And I'm just, maybe this is a question for planning staff, is how do we reconcile that? And I'll also bring it up, because last December, right, right after we came on to council, I saw that an item to amend the Master Plan to include the Southeast Connector as an element of the Master Plan was on the agenda, and then it got pulled. So I keep looking to see if we are going to do that master planning work here and have that discussion. Where are we at on that?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. That amendment is the update to the PSFI, the Public Services Facility, Facilities and Infrastructure Element of the Master Plan. A portion of that is also the upstate, update to the Fire Department portion of that. So it'll be the, the deconsolidation, and a portion of that is also the impact fees. So it's, we were moving forward, but now we need to look at impact fees further, and it's all one amendment to that one section of the Master Plan. With that will be the addition of the Southeast, the consideration for the addition of the Southeast Connector.
Well, I, I feel like if we're moving, to be consistent with NRS, I feel like if we are moving forward and committing huge dollar numbers on development, we maybe need to have the Master Plan discussion first, because otherwise, we become at risk in not being compliant with NRS in conformity. And also, the same is for the Butler piece. So this makes me concerned, because I feel like, you know, this has been RTC's project, but we're now looking at our conflict with our land use and our, you know, obligations under NRS. So, I mean, I-
I think-
You say it's moving forward, it's come, when, when do you anticipate that Master Plan piece to come to us?
I'm looking for Alexis.
Within the next four to six months, probably something like that.
Okay.
The Southeast Connector is identified in the regional plan.
Yes.
And so we would be updating our Master Plan also to be in conformance with the regional plan, where it is already identified.
Okay, well, we would need to do that. But, tell me this, I also have seen down on Planning Commission agendas, an entitlement for the Southeast Connector coming forward. And I would find it very in conflict with the NRS conformity requirement to be entitling it through, I don't know, special use permits or whatever, before we show it in our Master Plan. So can we schedule those in succession, in the proper succession?
We look at that as two separate reviews. The special use permit is simply the cuts and fills for the project. It's not for the roadway itself.
One of the findings of a special use permit is conformity with the Master Plan. How can we make a finding of conformity with the Master Plan for that special use permit for cuts and fills if we don't have it in the, if we don't have it in the Master Plan?
RTC has brought forward a request that, that is for cuts and fills, and for the, and to discuss the, the floodways. And so that's not for the roadway itself, but for the actual physical project.
I, I think we would be way out of line if we entertain a special use permit with a finding requirement of conformity with the Master Plan, and the Southeast Connector's not shown as a roadway improvement in our mobility.
If I can, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, since we have an application in process for that special use permit, we will probably have that conversation.
We're off agenda, I agree.
Yeah, we're way off the agenda on this.
And we've never heard from our attorneys that we aren't in legal conformance. We've never heard that from our attorneys.
Yeah, I mean, and it's a cuts and fills permit. It's not, I mean, yeah.
Well, I would support this, but I think we're moving into an area that makes us have exposure onto this issue. So I would support that we do this with the finding that a Master Plan amendment to include the Southeast Connector is brought to the City Council for consideration during the term of this agreement. And if it isn't approved or processed, then we have a, you know, possibly amend these. Are these ever amended during the year, course of a year?
We typically don't amend these.
Yes.
What did you do?
Typically, just do it once a year, and we don't amend it.
Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Staff's recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Well, would you accept a friendly?
No.
Okay. Well, then I am not going to be able to support this, because I feel like we're exposing ourselves on this conformity issue, and that poses risk for us. The last action the council took was in 1999, saying we're not going to do this road.
I thought that there was, there were documents sometime or another that said that we did support the road and saw it.
In the Master Plan?
All right. I have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries, six, one. Four, five, one. Five, one.
For the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Which one you going to? Item F2?
One.
F1, excuse me, that's right. Item F1.
Lori Miles, Public Works. This is the time and place set for our second public auction, and potential acceptance of the highest bid to lease certain vacant offices within City Hall here at One East First Street. Since there was no written bids, we can call for oral bids, if anything has, if anyone's interested. With no written or oral bids, we can close the public auction, and if we could get a motion to staff to move forward with leasing the vacant office space with the on-call city real estate broker, NAI Alliance. So move.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolution F12.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Ms. Miles, from my understanding of what you said, we don't need this resolution. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So we can move on to the next agenda.
Okay, item F2. Madam Secretary, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received. I do have one public comment card.
And, Mr. Mayor, before doing that, I ought to read, which is Bill Number 6875, An Ordinance Amending the Reno Municipal Code, Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08.201, entitled Permitted Uses by Base Zone District, and Section 18.08.405, Regional Center and Transit Corridor Overlay District, together with other matters, property relating thereto, establishing the Midtown zoning districts and development and land use standards for each district.
All right, before we take a motion, Gary Raiden? Gary Raiden?
Sit down.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
If we could just have a brief out, I read through this, and I could not find the, the changes that we made. Can you just go through the pages for me?
Yep, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. The changes that were, that council directed staff to make last time, for residential development to go up to 30 units, is located on page 90 and 93. 90 shows where all five of the design standards have to be placed, and 93, and that's, I'm sorry, 93 of the ordinance, I don't have access to your page numbers.
I know, we don't have them.
So I can't-
Can you just put it up?
So it-
On the screen?
So I can't reference page numbers, because I don't have that. I don't have those.
No, I hear you. But could you just put it up?
Sure.
So I could just-
So, development over 21 units per acre in the residential district shall incorporate all five of the following design criteria. So that's where that portion comes in.
Okay.
And then on 93, maximum density shall be 30 units per acre.
Okay.
And then the parking one? Number two is the parking standard, is page 86. And we just changed, we took the ratio out of the Wells Avenue overlay area, and just changed it in for the residential parking within the district.
Which, which box is that on that top area?
Down here. I'm sorry. I posted marking it there. So it's this lower section here on page 86 of the ordinance.
Where, where does it say that the administrator does not have discretion to do the on-street calculations?
Residential parking requirement in the Midtown District with no possibility of reduction as outlined in 1808.301, a mixed-use district.
And that's that reference?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then the la, the last was the landscaping, right?
And the landscaping, I know, the setback on page 85.
Oh, yeah, the setback. I found that one. I found that one, okay.
Decrease in the amount of landscaping is on page 89.
Okay. I think I saw that. Is that, okay, okay.
It is 5% for the commercial district.
That's fine. Thank you for making, showing me those changes.
Sure. There's one more correction on the, there was also direction to establish the floor ratio as .75 and .25.
Yeah.
If we do that now and here, it would be in conflict with the Master Plan.
Oh, don't want to do that.
So we added, don't want to do that. So we added wording that it will be reflected in, it will be reflected in the Master Plan portion, which is going to Planning Commission next week.
Okay, well, we've got to be in compliance with the Master Plan. So what about, in terms of the landscaping, can you all put a tickler somehow and see how many commercial landscaping plans come in, and we can keep track on seeing how this 5% is working? There were compelling arguments on it, but, you know, you never know until you get building permits in and you see something built.
I can, I can work with our IT staff and see if we can somehow tag those.
I mean, it's pretty visible stuff. It's Midtown. We all go by there and see, but, okay. Thank you. And with that, I'd like-
The person who has the public comment card, bounce to me.
You wish to speak, Mr. Raiden? Gary Raiden?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Raiden. For the record, I'm a resident in the West of Wells Midtown area. I'm also a member of Marmot Properties. We've been doing some redevelopment in the neighborhood. So my comment is simply to applaud and commend. The city managers, the, the mayor, the city council, staff, the Planning Commission, you're given a very, the Planning Commission especially was given a very difficult task, and they did a fantastic job, I, we felt, on, on listening to feedback from the neighborhood. It's always been our position that some of the changes that had been made were going to harm the growth of Midtown, and so, and we really felt like we were eventually heard in that matter. It was nice to see Barry up here earlier in the day, because she is a West of Wells business that depends on added density in the neighborhood to make her business and more businesses viable. And she really can't survive without that. We, we applaud the fact that you have heard that it's not necessarily the loudest and most passionate voices that, that should dictate policy, and that being passionate- about something doesn't make you an expert in it. That much of, that has worked so well in the West of Wells neighborhood should serve as a template going forward for midtown. And again, we, we commend the effort of everybody that's been involved in it and really have been just very impressed with the city and with people willing to hear what we had to say as well. And I would just like to thank everybody who has been involved in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve and also thank you all of staff's hard work and the planning commission. And to refer, no, no.
This is a motion to refer because it's an ordinance.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction, item G one.
Which is ordinance number 6307, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning rezoning, a 1.17 acre parcel located on the south side of Mayberry Drive, 200 feet west of Hunter Lake Drive from MF 14 multifamily, 14 units per acre to PF Public Facility, and a 1.25 acre parcel located on the west side of Hunter Lake Drive, 330 feet south of Mayberry Drive from SF 15 single-family residential, 1500, 15,000 square feet to PF Public Facility, together with other matters property relating thereto.
I move to adopt.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G two.
Which is ordinance number 6308, an ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno certain specifically described territory being 9.39 acres of property located north of the intersection of Gold Ranch Road and Mahogany Canyon Court, Washoe Canyon, Nevada, together with other matters property relating thereto. Could you adopt?
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to resolutions, item H one.
Resolution number 7908, resolution for budget augmentations and approval of budget revisions for the period of July 1st, 2013 through September 24th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions on this for staff.
Have a motion, and a second. Do I have a second? Have a second, okay, discussion.
Okay. Point of order, at what point do we ask for staff presentations or do we just always want to have our motions first and then ask for staff presentation?
Ask them anywhere you want to.
Okay, okay. So I have a few questions about this. This is through September 24th, right? So it's essentially almost the first quarter of our financial year, right?
That's correct. For the record, Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget.
Okay, okay. And I guess my questions are more in the attachments. On the first page, one of three of the attachment, the $1.9 million that was moved from water toll to street fund instead of using transfers, can you explain what's going on there?
Yes, all right. Let's see here.
Zach Kaffner, Office of Management and Budget. What's happened there is, in the past, the money was being recorded into the general fund, although the funds are supposed to be going to the street fund. So in the past, we were making a transfer from the general fund to the street fund. What we're doing is, we'd originally set up the budget to make that transfer, but we are getting rid of that budget and the transfer, and the corresponding transfer so that the money just gets recorded directly into the street fund.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is I'm trying to figure out what our commitment to streets in our, in our community is versus RTC who gets 22 cents out of every gallon of gas bought in this region. And I've been trying to understand, you know, we have our street override fund, which is a property tax, but it appears that we are somehow using, I guess, tomah right-of-way revenue for streets also? Is that our practice?
Right, this was, this was. Yeah, that's right, thank you. You're better.
For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. In answer to your question, the, the tomah right-of-way toll is, works as like a franchise fee?
Yeah.
And how that's set up with the, where those funds go is they were dedicated to the street fund. So that's, that's how that was set up.
Okay, okay. I, you know, I've never heard that. Is that in a fund policy or in the franchise agreement? I mean, where, where was that put into place? I've never seen that and I've been trying.
Was it resolution or was?
Was it resolution? Okay.
Susan Barwell, Deputy City Attorney.
It's by ordinance. It's by ordinance, okay, okay, thank you. And then down below on this first page, we have some funds between accounts as needed and we move some money into the Office of Community and Engagement. What are the, what's that transfer and what, when in general are all these, are these fund transfers within different departments, within different lines in different departments or among lines?
Correct. This is us augmenting the budget as we go through the fiscal year to move funds to the appropriate areas. The one that you're referencing was a salary increase for a staff member that was approved via the process, so the one for the Office of Communications and Community Engagement.
Okay, okay. And then, and then on the next page, we're up $3.8 million in community development block rep funds, I think I saw also, how'd that, how'd that happen?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Zach Kaffner, Office of Management and Budget. What that is, is we don't budget for grant awards and so as the, as the grant's drawn on, then we augment for that. So we didn't put any, put the usual ongoing operations of the CDBG funds in the budget because once we receive the funds, then we augment the budget to show those funds coming in and the, and the corresponding expenses.
Okay, so just like the police department just got a grant, that'll show up on another augmentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then what was this room tax fund adjustment needed due to bond refinancing? Were those the bond expenses with the downtown event center bond?
That was for the fire station.
That was the cost for the fire station, bond refinancing, okay.
And then a quick note on the item that you just talked about with the grants. If you remember during the budget process, we show that giant shortfall in, in the area of the budget where we don't put the grants in, that's why we always have that offset. And this is where you start to see that process come to light, was during the augmentations as we move those monies in, in as we receive them.
Okay, okay, so they build, they build up. And then what, down below on this railroad debt service, there was a settlement on the debt service for the railroad, $250,000. Where'd that money come from?
That has to do with the gentleman's club, there was a bankruptcy. And then, so we, so we moved from fund balance, well, the, the first one there has to do with reducing debt service. The gentleman's club had a bankruptcy issue and we were transferring some money regarding that. And that was an issue that happened.
A while ago.
Yeah.
So it's just, it was a cleanup item and then we moved from the fund balance into the retrack parcel as the next piece of that augmentation.
Okay, so, you know, our railroad debt is pretty big. I think it's a major fund. Are we anticipating any more windfalls and this just buys down our debt, our railroad debt?
Not that I anticipate any more windfalls. This was just, like I said, sort of a cleanup item, something that came to light that we had to augment for.
Okay, okay. Let me just page through, I think I had. Oh, how do I understand if the stabilization account has been tapped and also what our cash on hand is?
So those items will always come to City Council for approval and, so you won't see that in this process, that would come in a separate, as a separate item depending on the circumstances.
Okay.
So we've not yet gone there.
Okay, but our cash flow, where does that show on this last bit? You know, it shows, you know, cash on hand, where, where does that show?
Well, the stabilization fund hasn't been touched, so it's as adopted.
Okay, okay. Is the stabilization included within the cash on hand? Is that how that works or is it its own fund line item?
Zach Kaffner, Office of Management and Budget. The reason you're seeing cash is because that is an, fleet manager, you're referring to fleet management, correct?
No, I'm referring at the very end of this document, page 22.
Oh, page 22, under this.
Oh, I guess it is fund, you're right, it is, okay.
Yeah, so some, some have a cash balance and then others have fund balance depending on what the, what the fund is classified as.
Nature, okay, okay, I see that. Okay, well, thank you very much for that and an all motion to approve, if there's.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H two.
Resolution number 7909, resolution approving major fund designations for fiscal year 2013.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
I have comment, or questions on this as well. I see this is kind of a regular thing that we do each year, but one thing is the downtown event center debt fund. Because, didn't we roll in the fire station debt into that one?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director, for the record, no, that was a, it was rolled in as part of the issuance to save issuance costs. So the $900,000 for the fire station bond was just as, it was rolled in as part of the bond, it was actually rolled in as part of the street bond that was refinanced, not the downtown event center bond.
Okay.
But it was just, it was just as part of an issuance to save an issuance cost. It is actually a separate series.
Okay, so the, this fund, the downtown event center debt fund does not show, does not include this, that debt for the fire station?
That is correct.
That's in a, and a different debt fund. And I guess my question is, would there be value in changing out, like the redevelopment agency capital project fund? I mean, aren't there large areas within that that could be broken down and so we could have, I mean, what is in the redevelopment agency capital project fund? It's basically a debt fund, right?
That is correct. It's just, and that's why it meets the criteria and that is why it's designated as a major fund.
But is there just enough debt in there that it could be broken into maybe two pieces so we could get an idea of what debt is associated with?
All that information is reported in the financial statements. This is just designation, designating how it's handled in the financial statements as to whether it's a major fund. All the debt is reported in the notes to the financial statement, all the debt is broken out in the financial statements. This is just designating whether it's a major fund or not, which has additional ramifications as to reporting. And even if a fund isn't designated as a major fund, it is still a lot of times reported in the financial statements, it's just as a separate line item.
Okay, I mean, I'm just looking at it from someone who reads these things, just trying to understand, you know, when I see the funds broken down a little bit more, it's helpful and I'll, and I'll, I'll leave that one alone because I'm not as familiar with it. But for example, the sanitary sewer enterprise fund, you know, we have that joint agreement with Tomworth and that takes up a big section of that fund, but then we also have our collection system. And I'm always trying to figure out how much we're spending on our wastewater treatment and how much we're spending on the collection system. Do you see any value in dividing those up into, you know, how much is, how much we're spending on each so we can, you know, better understand what our infrastructure, you know?
If I might, if I might jump in, Councilwoman, I think what you're talking about is maybe project tracking versus fund tracking. I mean, you don't necessarily want to track them in separate funds, but you can certainly use project code tracking to, to, to track different projects. I mean, because what you're talking about is more of the cost accounting side of it versus fund accounting.
Well, I'm trying to get to the readability, because this is how the CAFRA looks.
Well, it is how the CAFRA looks, but it is also a cost to the audit. The more major funds you have, you will increase the audit cost because there will be an opinion rendered on each of the major funds.
Oh, uh-huh.
If that information, that information is available and is, can be reported on additionally or separately.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess with that, all motion to approve. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H three.
Resolution number 7910, resolution donating Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to the Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living to defray expenses associated with its cosponsorship of the keynote speaker for the Disability Awareness Month program hosted by the Disability Awareness Coalition in Reno in October 2013 in the amount of $1,500.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item H four.
Resolution number 7911, resolution donating Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to the University of Nevada Reno Foundation to defray expenses associated with its cosponsorship of the Chalk on the Block Street Art Festival and Disability Vendor Fair hosted by the Pi Capify Fraternity in Reno in October 2013 in the amount of $4,250.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H four.
H five is resolution number 7912, resolution establishing regular city council meeting dates for the 2014 calendar year in the month of January 2015, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question about this. Did you have a look on this? Did you cross-check this to the Washoe County School District schedule and vacations?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, the manager's office set the date, so I don't know if we can get a representative to provide that information. Legally, it can be set by resolution now, your meeting dates due to, to the charter changes that went through last summer.
Have a motion, and a second. Item H five, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries, do you vote no?
Yes, no, I agree.
Okay. Now we'll go to standard items. We've done J one, how about J two?
For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. Item before you today is a review of the recommendation from, from staff in regards to the award of the parking management system. So as you are aware, we went out with a request for proposals. During that process, we received six proposals. Of those six, we, through the selection committee, which consisted of our parking consultant, Julie Dixon, myself, Kurt Dietrich with Public Works, and, and a member of the Community Service Officer Supervisor with enforcement. And through that group, we narrowed that down to two. Then we went through a demonstration and presentation and from that, we were able to narrow it down to IPS group. So I wanted to discuss a little bit about IPS. IPS is the first, one of the very first credit card single-spaced, in fact, they were the first single-spaced credit card-enabled meter. They're out of San Diego. They have over 120,000 meters that have been, that are in service. If you go to the Bay Area, this is what you will find. If you go to Southern California, this is type of meters you'll find. They're also located in other jurisdictions across the United States. I have brought an example of one of the meters here today, just to show, show everyone what it is that this meter will do. First on the meter is a, what you're actually are getting, this is the housing that the city currently has out on the street right now. There's, there's no difference between that. What you have is a, a new hood and then this is the actual meter unit that fits in. So you can see that when you actually go to retrofit the existing meters, it's quite, it happens quite quickly. So you end up popping this in, putting a new hood on, dropping this meter mechanism in, and then closing this. And if I was in front, I would be able to do this better, there you go, and tie it in. The meter has a solar panel in the back with a rechargeable battery, so that's how it, it powers up. It's basically like a little cellphone inside of that mechanism, which is what is used to communicate out to the, to the backend office, which then supplies us the information that we would need in terms of when somebody paid, how much they paid, if they paid by credit card or coin. We're able to audit these meters because we have the record of, of what was in there, so we go collect a route. We can compare that route to what the meters are telling us that they actually had in there. If you'd like, I'd like to pass this around just so everybody can take a look at it. So, with the recommendation from staff and through the review, we believe that this meter is the one that met for price, reliability, the convenience factor, and the experience. There, there is a cost model with this, basically, the meters, there's a, there's an outright purchase, the purchase, there will be a purchase price per meter, and the company has offered a five-year lease purchase at 0% interest. What staff is asking from Council today is actually approval of our recommendation for us to go back and negotiate the contract with all of the performance standards that we would have from the company and be able to bring that back to you in an agreement. What we are recommending is that we would purchase 898 meters, which would take care of the majority of our downtown, which we had listed in our RFP, and then potential for us to use some of our coin-only meters that are still operating, maybe on some of the, the lesser volume parking, but where we still have a need for parking from time to time. And that is my, that is my presentation, that generally what, what I want you to know about this meter is that not only will it accept credit card and coin, but it also has the ability to be added on in the future for a sensor, so that's, that's a, that's an option that we could have, we're not recommending that option right now because we want to be able to get the system out there, get it operating, and see how it's really performing.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The 898, that's much smaller than what we've done in the past, what we did before. Why are we at 898?
Thank you, Councilmember Dorch, we, we looked at the areas that had the highest level of parking, and that's what we were recommending. We are also looking at doing a time-limited areas of parking, but what we found during the RFP process is that, in reality, the time, the cost to sensor and monitor the sensors was more expensive than just putting meters in. So, what we would recommend on the incremental approach is still going with 898, but taking some of the 650-plus coin-operated only meters that we have, and be putting those in some of those lesser-used areas. So, we'd still have those metered, but it'd only accept coin for now, and then-
Okay.
-through the process, we could add some more meters in those areas.
So, would we be back up to around the number of meters we had before?
That's what I would recommend, we'd have, we'd have the 1,200 spaces, we'd build the 1,200 spaces-
With this, we would get up to that number?
Correct.
And then, where, where else have these meters been installed? I mean, what's their background, where else have they been?
Certainly.
I, I've seen something similar to this in San Luis Obispo-
Correct.
-that worked very well, is it the same meter?
Same meter.
Okay.
So, you'll see these in San Luis Obispo, you'll see them in San Francisco, you'll see these in Los Angeles, you'll see them in Hollywood. This is basically the single space credit card-enabled meters, this, this is what's used. An interesting point to that is, if you look at where we advertise for tourism, we hit the Bay Area really hard, this is what they're used to using in the Bay Area.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right.
I have a couple of questions, can you, can you walk me through of the six respondents to the RFP, can you walk me through what your criteria was for the elimination down to the final two, and kind of what background checking or due diligence process that you used to select or recommend IPS today?
Certainly, we had six, six proposals, of the six proposals, one of the proposals was for a monitoring sensor-type program, similar to what we have in Midtown, and so, they didn't really have a meter, a meter, paid meter type of, of a system, so, so that was one, and we were just analyzing them on, on a sensor-only, some of our time-limited potential parking. We had two proposals that were for multi-space kiosk-type situations, similar to the setup where you would have numbers on the street, and you go in and put your parking space in, and, and pay for your parking at a central kiosk pay station. Then we had three proposals that were for a single space credit card-enabled type meter. As we went through those proposals, we looked more at cost and what their initial proposals were, from that, it really, it really took two, brought it down to, and both the two that, that the, that was recommended to do a further presentation and demonstration of their system were credit, were single space credit card-enabled meters. So, then we took those two systems, and we put in a demonstration near St. Mary's, and we had two meters with sensors at, side by side, so we had two of one company's meters with sensors, two of another company's meters with sensors, and we were able to analyze that. It, it actually told us a lot, we were able to see how the companies were able to, how they deployed the meters. So, even though it was just two, you know, how did they come out, how, how easy was it for them to do the install, the coordination that we would have with them on that. We also were able to collect data for over a week, in which, which we thought was important, even though it was a short timeframe, we thought it was important for them to have their system out there, collect that data for a week, and then be able to see how their back office performed and get information, not off of somebody else's data that's up somewhere else, but actually how they put this in, and were able to show us how that, that information would, would transfer. And so, we were, we, we got to look at both of the back offices and, and see what we liked about those. Then we held a, a presentation, and we had them demonstrate, and we gave them ahead of time, so there's no surprises, we gave them, said, here are the, here's the criteria, the things that we want you to review, and, and tell us, and, and show us how it works. What if we want to make a change to the rate? What does that look like, and, and how is that done? What does it look like just to collect the coin? What's the process that the, the individuals would have to go through that were collecting the coin, so that we would have the audit ability for, for the meter? Obviously, you, we, we could go out and, and see how it worked, and, and do a demonstration with coin and, and a credit card during that week time as well. So, those were kind of the things that we did in terms of analyzing the two systems. We did not pick the lowest-cost option, we reviewed both options that, that we had, and the experience just is, wasn't there with the other company yet, they, they don't have that many areas that they're at, and we went and, and went to some of the customers that they have had, and, and for recent experience, to see how those meters were performing for them, and, and we weren't comfortable with what we were hearing back on, on, on the one-meter company. So, however, when we went and checked the sources that we had with, with IPS group, we were very comfortable. One of the places, they had had their pilot in place, and, and they said, we had two coin jams when asked about any, any, any problems with the maintenance. Well, coin jams will happen, the maintenance side tells you when those happen, you just go out there and eliminate the coin jam, and you're good to go. And that was just two incidences over a three-month period of time with, with 100 meters out. So, their comment was, they just work.
And, and where was that that said that they only had two coin, and how many meters did they have?
That was Laredo, Texas, and it was during a pilot project that they, that they had with actually both companies.
Okay, and Laredo now has IPS?
They do.
And how long have they had it?
They put these in place in, I want to say it was June, and they ran them last four months, and that was their experience, and their experience was, was different with the other company, much different.
And our pilot program with the u, the functionality of these was for how long?
We had them put these in for a week, for, it was, it was almost two weeks, actually. However, we're familiar with them based on their experience in other locations, we, we talked to cities that have had them in place for several years, as well as our parking consultant and, and her experience with, with this and other systems was very helpful in our decision process.
And how long has IPS been in business?
You know, I know that they've had these out for well over five years, I don't know the, the total, I know they have over 120,000 of them out. When they were looking at giving us some information, like how many credit card transactions we, we could expect, they had over 40,000 meters that are at, set at a rate of a dollar per hour, just like ours, as opposed to, you know, places where it's $2 or $2.50 or whatever the prices are, but they were able to just pull out that information and, and get that to us immediately.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add to Councilwoman Jordan's question, and just pulling this information off of IPS's website, it says that they have been in the telecommunications and parking industries for over 19 years.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And John, could you confirm the review team included our hired industry expert?
Yes, Julie Dixon, our parking consultant, was, was heavily involved and very helpful. She was able to really get down into the nitty-gritty on the performance standards, and those were, a lot of those performance standards were directly part of that demonstration presentation that we had, where they, where the companies committed to meeting those standards that we were asking for. And those standards had things to do with how long of a, of a wait time of, that you would have for a, a maximum wait time for a credit card transaction, those types of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Flansberg, I want to ask you a question on this pro forma that you've given to us. I see that estimates of parking citation revenue kick in at $600,000 for five years, starting at 2014, which I think would be revenue that we would anticipate paying off this medium-term obligation that we're poised to obtain. That number of $600,000 in parking citation revenue is about what we received in 2009, 2010, prior to when we cut our enforcement personnel from seven to three people. Are we still at three people?
We are at three people today, we actually, in, in this analysis, have put in the cost for an additional officer, as well as you would have the two employees that would be doing the, the coin collection, who also would have the ability to write citations.
Okay, so we're at maybe four, five, you know, equivalents, five people, and we backed out the cost of those employees into this. Are you confident that we're going to get $600,000 in revenue each of these five years?
I am confident, and, and the reason I'm confident is, is the other things that we put into place as part of the parking management program, which I'll come back and cover in the future with, with additional recommendations, but one of those things with the DMV hold and putting those things in place, I, I just think that our percentage of collections is going to go up.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I think I'm being very conservative, actually, in these numbers.
Okay, okay, I get it. So, what you're saying is, we're going to be hiring on two individuals, what do we call these people, are they CSOs, is that what it is?
Looking at adding one C, the recommendation coming back, and, and what I used in this pro forma, was, was one additional CSO, and then, of course, the two parking meter technicians.
Okay, are these, and, you know, we lost so many, so many of our personnel during the cuts, about a quarter, a third of our workforce, I think, are these people who are still on layoff lists?
My understanding is that the Community Service Officer one position does have two individuals on it still.
Okay, well, that'd be great if we can bring people back who, who worked here before and did good work for us. So, that's all, I thought we were going to bring in a, kind of a management analyst program coordinator, is that, is that still, is that accounted into here?
It is accounted in there, in the parking meter maintenance line item.
Okay, what's the, is that a technician, or what's the qualms of that person?
Still trying to, still trying to narrow that down, looking like in a management assistant, managing analyst type of a role.
Okay, okay, so, just that we know that we're, we're accepting on three more personnel with this proposal right now, okay. Well, those are my questions, thank you.
Yes.
What is your forecasted revenue, once these are installed, for a year?
So, based what we're looking at for revenue after this transition year that we're in right now, so beginning, say, July 1, I'm anticipating about $650,000 a year in the meter revenue, and I'm anticipating about $600,000 in the citation revenue, and that kind of follows through, we went back and, and put a history together in the pro forma to kind of look back 10 years and, and see where we, where we were at, well, actually, I think it's like nine, but, years, and then bringing that forward. So, I feel, I feel pretty comfortable with, with what we're recommending, and, and then also trying to be, you know, somewhat conservative on our costs as well, meaning that I try to, to not lowball it, but try to, try to, you know, anticipate what those costs are going to be, and, and even make them a little higher if, if need be, just so we have some, some room in there.
Did they help you forecast, based on similar cities that they work with in the same-
Yes, yes, we were able to get information, for instance, one of the costs that we have, let me, let me go back, when you have a coin-only meter, so you buy the meter, you put it into place, and you just have maintenance and things that you need to do with that meter.
Yeah.
When you have a credit card-enabled meter, you have a greater, you know, more methods to pay, obviously, because you have the credit card option, but there is a monthly charge because it's like a cell, a small cellphone in there, and then you have credit card transactions, and there's a portion that you, that you pay for the credit card transactions, and so that's, that's included in the cost as well. And so, when I come back to you at a future meeting with some of policy decisions, we're going, I want to talk to you things about, should we have a minimum charge for a credit card, meaning if you're going to pay, say, 22 cents for every credit card transaction, it doesn't make sense to have a, a 25 cent option for them, maybe it's a dollar minimum or, or something, or, or even a two-hour minimum or something that you would have for credit, for the convenience of using a credit card.
Yes.
Just a, a couple of comments, obviously, the main objective here is convenience, and I love the fact that it's a per-space option, I think to have to make somebody walk a block to pay to frequent a business downtown or anywhere in the city is, is not something I could support, so I appreciate that, that they're per-space. Second is the usability and the ease of, the use of the different pay options, so that's, that definitely appealed to me, because at the end of the day, it's the end user that we're trying to please and make an inviting and convenient experience. Third is the functionality, it works, it works. You have done a very good job of vetting the candidates for this and ensuring that the system worked. And then reliability, I think your example of having two coin jams as the, as the main concern speaks volumes with regards to their reliability, so I applaud you for going through this process, I'm sure no one is more happy than you to see the kiosks gone and us moving forward, so, thank you for your efforts in this, and I think, I think this is, is great for our visitors and our community.
Yes, Mr. Dorch. What, what is the lifespan of these units?
We expect 10 years-
Okay.
...with them.
So, we got a five-year payback and a, and a 10-year lifespan?
Yeah, so kind of what I'd recommend going forward is, we would kind of take the money that we're setting aside on the capital, pay it over that five years, just continue that, that cost into, you know, a sinking fund-type situation, so we have the money to purchase the new meters when we need to.
Perfect, thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I will second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Take your meter with you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I make another comment? This, this is an exciting day when we're out with the old and in with the new when it comes to the parking, so, as part of the settlement agreement with regards to curb, we also, I'm assuming, starting tomorrow, they, the kiosks, which were bank-owned, will now be removed, and they are all to be removed by November the 9th.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, now we go to boards and commission appointments. Item K1A, civil service, I recommend we appoint John Hester. Second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. K1B, financial, Ms. Tila Hammond and Kovitz are expiring, but they are eligible for reappointment.
I move to reappoint those two individuals.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item K1C, Irene Dixon-Chappell is expired, she is eligible for reappointment.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to reappoint Irene Dixon-Chappell.
Okay, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Senior Citizen Advisory Board Committee, three applications, those would be Casey Gilman, Jeanette O'Neil, and Robert Mulvaney.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to appoint Robert Mulvaney.
Robert Mulvaney, okay. Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item K2, appointments to the Permanent City of Reno Charter Committee. Ward one, do you have a suggestion?
I do, but before we appoint, I guess we each have an appointment, can I ask questions of staff? I haven't had a chance to reread the, the charter bill that set up this committee. It's been a while. What, um, I meant to do it. What does the legislation say about the Charter Committee doing?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Megan Salsito for the record. Thank you, Councilmember Breckus, referring back to our charter bill, AB9, it lays out the responsibilities of the committee. Committee shall meet at least once every two years before the beginning of each regular session of the legislature, and when requested by the council. They shall meet jointly with the city council, and And, trying to look at... They are to review the charter to determine if any amendments shall be made to the charter and present those findings to the council. And if the council approves those recommendations, then the council can select to put those into one of the council's bill draft requests. And if the council chooses not to put those recommendations forward in a BDR, then the Charter Committee can seek an alternative bill sponsor to submit those to the legislature.
Okay, so they have a little autonomy. I guess, has staff given any thought to a process of how often they'd meet, when we'd have our joint meetings, when they'd wind down their work to help us, you know, kind of, if we have any bills, moving those into the next session?
Yes, Councilmember Breckus. Bill draft requests are to be submitted to the legislature by September 1 of 2014. So we anticipate that we will convene this Charter Committee early, either late this year or early next year, so that they can begin their process of looking through the charter and determining whether any changes need to be made. And we anticipate that they will meet at least monthly, and more if necessary, to accomplish their business. And I'll look to Cadence as to when the joint meeting would be, based on the past practice.
Good afternoon, for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. As Megan said, we anticipate this group convening their work either late this year or early in 2014. Given the timeline of when we typically bring forward items for consideration for the council for submission, as the city's BDRs, which is typically either in late May or early June, prior to your summer break, so that there is adequate time over that break, moving into July and August, to finalize those items before they're due to be submitted to the Legislative Council Bureau in September, we would anticipate likely holding that joint meeting probably in late April or early May, to allow for additional meetings of the Charter Review Committee and an additional joint meeting to take place, should that be necessary.
Okay. I guess I'm thinking, you know, having watched our last charter bill, and this is for the rest of the council, watched our last charter bill come through and what issues, you know, were of focus, and then we have a little charter issue going on right now that the Supreme Court will be deciding pretty soon, is maybe we have a further, an item, once the committee's set up, that the council kind of discuss, you know, give a little bit of a record to the Charter Commission on issues that we'd maybe like them to focus on, or that we see of importance related to the charter. Maybe we do that, and then have a joint meeting where we have some discussion with them to kick off the process, or... So I just wanted to, before we go into our appointments, just suggest that as a thinking point for the rest of the council for future items. And so, anyway, because, you know, otherwise, anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilwoman Breckus, I think that's a very good suggestion, and something that staff had actually already contemplated. We did not discuss, but as a number of you may recall, our Washoe Legislative Delegation also is under the bill required to make appointments to the committee, and it was our intent to come back and make a report to this council as to the full membership of the committee, once the commission, pardon me, the delegation has made those, and to seek your direction at that time, if there are any specific items that council wishes to request that the committee take under consideration.
Okay, okay. I understand the process now.
And Cadence, as a follow-up to that, will they make, the legislative delegation, will they make their appointments based on these applications, or will it be an entirely different slate?
Councilwoman, that is at their discretion. We have shared these applications with them earlier. We meet with the delegation quarterly, met with them earlier this month, shared these with them, let them know that you would be making your selections, that you were scheduled to make your selections today. They indicated that it was their desire to wait until you had made your selections before they made theirs, but really, it is at their discretion. We've given them the applicants, so that they knew which members of our community had expressed interest, and they may select from those, or they may appoint other individuals.
Well, Mayor, I want me to make my appointment. I want to thank, you know, as typical, Ward one has a lot of interested folks who want to be involved, and I know many of these people, and there's so many qualified folks here, but I'm appointing John Marshall.
John Marshall?
It's in the law, I think.
How are the appointments coming from us? How do we get into the 13 numbers?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, each of the council members and the mayor appoint one member, and then there are additional six appointments that are made by the legislative delegation. So in accordance with the statute, each of you appoint one member to the committee.
So do we want to vote on this as we go? Or do we just want to put them all out there? I mean, we're all just picking one right now, right?
Yeah, we're all picking one.
Yeah.
Ward two.
Boy, I'll repeat. Every single one of the applicants for Ward two have been involved in this community and have even served on other committees very respectfully. Tough, tough choices, but I will go with Cynthia Albright.
Cynthia Albright. Ward three.
Yeah, he's not here.
He's not here. Ward four.
I'm going to go with Joe Thiele.
With who?
Elton Mack Rossi.
Okay. All right. We'll do, we'll have to put Oscars on the next time.
But you get one and...
You get one and I get one.
Oh, you get one, okay.
You get one, too.
Which one do you, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to appoint John Metzger.
John Metzger? I'm going to appoint Jim Naidoo.
That's a good choice.
Jim Naidoo.
Okay, so there's six of them. Then Oscar can do his at the next meeting.
We'll go ahead and make a motion on these, and then we'll do Oscar.
Just put it on for Oscar for the next meeting.
Chair'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Identification of mayor and council items for future agenda?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'd like for us to initiate a text amendment that will allow for recreational activities, i.e., a tennis facility within the Greenfield neighborhood planning area overlay zone, zoning district, and that parcel number is actually 019-140-22.
Okay. Have something else? You?
Yes. I would like to put together a small business task force to look at the process of small business, whether it's looking at policies and procedures to streamline the process. We heard Barry speak today, and since I'm the at-large seat, I deal with a lot of small business issues, and I think that we can cut down on a lot of the red tape that, you know, these businesses go through, and that there could be a one-stop shop. So possibly even looking at, we have Reno Direct, maybe we can do Reno Business Direct and have sort of a business hotline for small business, or look at creating a handbook or something to that effect.
Any other items?
I just had a question. On a prior meeting, we had started to form the homeless task force, and I didn't see it on today's agenda to start identifying who could be on it, and I wondered when that hits an agenda.
Now, what?
Okay.
Let me ask you something about that task force. What are you looking for?
The task force, well, as all of us have heard, either from residents or visitors, is the presence and potential negative effects on businesses of the homeless population in our downtown, on Fourth Street, and in the surrounding areas. And how are we, as a community, going to work together to, at the same time, meeting the needs of our homeless population, but trying to mitigate and minimize the negative impacts that they might be having? And my thought was to have, as we did with the graffiti task force, have members of, let's say, the Community Assistance Center, one or two, RPD, the East Fourth Streets Merchants, the Reno Regional Alliance for Downtown, and maybe some other key, and a client or two from the Community Assistance Center, to talk about processes, procedures, and ways in which we might be able to address this ever-present concern in our community. So that's what my thought was, was to form this task force, similar as we have done with the graffiti task force. To come together, as we've said before, it's the stakeholders in the community that come up with the best recommendations and solutions and ideas, and get the right people in the room to talk about ways in which we can help improve the homeless situation.
Okay. All right. Any others? Okay. Any reports of conferences and professional meetings? Mr. Delgado would like to contribute $1,000 from the general fund, or is it from his discretionary Chair'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, that's item L4.
Yes, please, read that.
That's resolution number 7913, resolution donating council donation funds to the International Church Fellowship Youth Empowered to Succeed program, to provide mentoring, educational, and consulting services to at-risk youth in the amount of $1,000.
Move to adopt.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L5.
Resolution number 7914, resolution donating council donation funds to the Boy Scouts of America Nevada Area Council for the Scout Reach Scholarship Program in the amount of $250.
Move to adopt. Oh, I can't.
Yeah, you can. All right, you have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries... Item L6.
Resolution number 7915, resolution donating council donation funds to the New Life Christian Center to offset costs associated with their after-school program in the amount of $250.
Move to adopt.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L7.
Resolution 7916, resolution donating council donation funds to Secret Witness to help fund their ongoing graffiti tagging reward program in the amount of $500.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L8.
That was mine. I was, it came to my attention a while ago that our non-conforming use section of our code is pretty complicated. There's a provision in there related to when we were doing retrack, and there were some exchanges of properties, and that transaction occurred a long time ago. So that cleanup, and then some of the other provisions, I just thought that to make it more usable and conforming, to, you know, due process, it'd be good to have a look at it. And staff, I think, used a half hour, maybe, or so, of up to two hours in writing a memo expanding upon that concept, so maybe you saw that memo that they wrote about it. Anyway, so that's that. Do we motion on these?
Do you have a motion?
I motion.
All right, do I have a second? Motion dies lack of a second. Item M1, we have a public hearing this night.
That's tonight.
That's what I've been going to say. Do you mind if I say? We, item M1.
We're just trying to help you out.
No, I know that, and I appreciate it. I know. We have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. We'll be in recess till the hour of 6:00. When we'll have item M1, gaslight lane special use permit for parcel map. Tonight is the public hearing. Item M1, city staff, gaslight lane special use permit for parcel map. The appellant's are Gail Kern and Michael Pany. We will allow 15 minutes for each appellant to make their presentation. Gail Kern, do you want to start, or do you want... Where's Gail's Kern? There's Gail Kern. How are you? You're up. Sir? Madam Secretary, all the notice had been sent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. Six emails in opposition were received. Six emails in opposition.
Okay.
Good evening. Gail Kern, for the record. This appeal that was filed by University Ridge was to preserve our rights under a certain Supreme Court case, and if you would prefer to have the applicant who actually is appealing, I want you to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission. I'm more than happy to proceed, but I didn't know if it made more sense for you to hear Mr. Pany on behalf of C4, or you don't care?
Doesn't matter. Hope we're smart enough to understand it.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, though, I do need to make a disclosure. And I've got the full disclosure on the record with the city clerk, but at every meeting that we have this issue come before us, I need to disclose that I am a member of the Homeowners Association in University Ridge and pay dues to that organization, but am not impacted any differently than anyone else, and have requested an opinion from the State Ethics Commission on whether or not I can hear this case, and they said yes, but I do need to disclose that I am a member of the Homeowners Association, but that I can hear it and vote on it. Is that sufficient, Jonathan?
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, yes.
And as I said, there is a full disclosure on record with the city clerk.
Ms. Kern, before you do start, I'm going to reverse things a little bit. We have 23 people that do not wish to speak, and they're in opposition. We have eight people that do wish to speak, and they are in opposition. So I'm going to let them speak first, and then we will have, I'm going to bump you off there, okay?
I am fine with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be calling you back. Thank you. Denise Edwards.
I wish I wasn't first, though, but...
Well, you want to be next, I'll call somebody else.
Would you do that, please? I'm used to being at the end of the line.
I will let you rest a little bit, all right?
Thank you.
Christine Lemire?
Through your belt.
Oh, yeah, threw you right under the bus. I can't keep rotating them now.
My name is Christine Lemire. I live at 3060 Socrates Drive. I am a homeowner up there at University Ridge. I am, for what the Planning Commission upheld, is that C4 does not have, does not meet the findings to have a parcel map change. And I know Mr. Pany keeps saying that it's just lines on a map, and it doesn't matter. Well, to me, lines on a map do matter, and I think it matters to everybody. Our property values, our property is our lines on a map. The city has lines on a map. The county has lines on a map. The state, each country, those lines on a map are very, very important, and I think many wars have been fought because of lines on a map. So don't let them tell you that it's just lines on a map, because it's not. And they do not meet the findings to allow them to put different lines on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, she threw all y'all under the bus, didn't she? Well, she threw all of y'all under the bus, didn't she?
Hello there, Lee McCord. I really didn't think I'd be speaking. I was hoping you would just say, hey, guess what, folks? It's done with. We're not going to have to deal with C4 Equity again, which I would, which would make me very happy. I guess one thing that's been on my mind is that it is obvious that the city is doing everything they can to make Reno a better place to live. I mean, it's on the TV, it's on everything. And I really applaud you for doing it, but at the same time, you can't leave out almost 600 homes, the people at University Ridge. You can't leave them out. And you can't ignore the fact that C4 Equity, if they got their way, would be located five minutes from downtown. Now, how good is that going to make the city look and smell for people that come into town? Now, if you're trying to take care of the city, that's fine, but guess what? We're part of it, too. Please don't leave us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bell?
My name is Tom Bell, and I'm serving as the President of the University Ridge Homeowners Association. And I just want to start by thanking you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, for what you've done in the past in making the right decisions on these matters, and we are very confident that you'll make the right decision tonight. C4 objects that they should be able to parcel their property even without stating uses, but, you know, we live in a society, they can't do anything they want with their property. I can't do anything I want with my property if it could potentially endanger other citizens. And parcelling does change allowed uses on a property. This is the entire point. This is the reason that the Planning Commission turned down the parcel map SUP. C4 also implies that it's unfair that other companies, other property owners can parcel their properties in town, but they haven't raised a single case. You know, permits are public record. They should be able to point to another case where somebody decided to parcel a property, submitted an application without uses, and that was granted. I think the number of those applications that have been granted is still zero, and I think there's a good reason for that. And finally, I just want to say that, you know, some people may be getting tired of all these hearings. I'm sure that you are tired of these hearings, and C4, I think, is getting tired of these hearings. I'd just like to say that we hope that C4 will decide to go home. They don't live in Reno. They come from Incline Village. They can exercise their right to use their industrial property in a truly industrial area in Incline Village, and it's not appropriate for a residential area in Reno. If they want to do it in Reno, they should find an area that is appropriate, that does not have residential adjacency. So I can say for the homeowners that I represent that we live here. We're not going away. We're going to continue to fight for the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lou Alanco. I live at 3479 Weaver Place, Reno, Nevada. I'm a homeowner in University Ridge. I also want to thank the city council for upholding our position, and I also want to thank the Planning Commission for doing so, for also upholding our position. At the first Planning Commission, only one member of the Planning Commission had actually gone up and seen the site, and he was the only one who voted against it. The rest of the Planning Commission voted for it. We appealed, we came here, and several of the city council people came up, they actually saw the site, and they heard our stories and how it would affect our life. They overturned the Planning Commission. Then, the Planning Commission, then C4 requested a parcel map. I believe the Planning Commission was convinced that they had a legal right to not consider uses. Every one of the Planning Commission members had, in their disclosures, said they had met with C4 before the planning, before, but they hadn't met with us. But they had met with C4 representatives, and they were convinced that they, in fact, Mr. Cluse got up and said, we're only here to discuss lines on paper. No uses will be considered. Then, when it was our turn for the public comment, they said, no lines, no uses will be considered. But we know that it's more than lines on paper. It's our lives, and, believe me, it's, we're smelling the fumes, and we're doing all of this, and we told our stories anyhow. And the Planning Commission, they had all visited the site, I will say that. And finally, they asked the attorney, and the attorney said, you know, Ms. Kern had made a very good point of why uses should be considered, and said, Ms. Kern has made a good point, and you can vote your conscience on this. And from that time, it turned, and they also unanimously voted in our favor. And then, as, one month ago, again, it was voted in our favor. We're not against development, believe me. We're not against business. We're not against tax revenue or anything like that. We're against a development that impacts a residential area, and we're against you preserving your right to protect us. C4's attorney would have you change city law because of a supposed loophole, and it's not a loophole. It is not, there's no conflict with state law, and don't give up your right to protect us. You are our last avenue. You've protected us before, and we're asking you to protect us again tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. David Baval?
I'm going to pass.
You want to pass? Denise Edwards? It's time to start over, Denise. I can't, can't let you dodge anymore.
Okay. I'm Denise Edwards at 1121 University Ridge Drive, and I'm a homeowner, like you all have heard before, and it's in my backyard. You know, I just, it's like a nightmare, a horrible nightmare that just won't go away. For what Troy Carson bought for that lot, you know, bought that lot, it, there's none of our homes that are valued at that price. I mean, we've all, you know, our homes are way valued higher. We live in nice homes. We've all worked really hard to pay for them, and pay our taxes, and do all the right things, make, you know, we've made that mountain beautiful, and not just with our homes and our yards. We love each other up there. We, we're all, as you can see, we're like the Wolf Pack. We're all united. We, we love our mountain. We've worked hard for the mountain. And we're not against Troy himself. He's just a young man trying to do a business. It's just unfortunate. He's going to, he's wanting to do a business that will hurt our, myself, my neighbors, my grandchildren, their grandchildren. It's just a real harmful business. It's not like putting in a park, or something nice, or amusement rides, or, you know, you know, it's, it's going to affect our health. And it has affected our health since we've been fighting this. A lot of us have gotten ill over it, because it's, it's like, you know, a bad neighbor that won't go away kind of thing, but I know you all do the right thing, and we'll respect you for whatever your decision is. We just want you to be able to always be there to protect us if we have to come back. You know, we just, we're just praying hard, and we just all want to, you know, stay in our retirement homes and be able to breathe clean air. And there has been reports lately, that, I don't know if you heard it Monday night, that fine dust does give you, you know, lung and bladder cancer. That's a new finding. So I just figured the first two years of them being in business so far, I've suffered enough, and my neighbors have suffered enough. And I wish he could build a dome and put himself in it. That would solve a lot, but it's still, the traffic on Socrates will, will kill one of us someday. And it will, because it's the most dangerous road. We can't even hardly drive up it during the snow, you know, and so it's just, it's just, it's the most dangerous road coming up and down, even in good weather. So I just, you know, I know you all realize that. You've been up there. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I didn't go over time this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
May I speak after all?
We should make up your mind. We've got a long night, so you come on up, and I'm going to give you three minutes. You just wanted to clean up. That's all you wanted to do, is do bad up.
Well, I hope it is a cleanup, but thank you very much. My name is Dave Bavel. I live at 721 Sienna Park Drive in Reno. My property, my wife and I, our property does not butt up against the development. We're up on a ridge up there. This is my fourth trip to this microphone, and I apologize for changing my mind, I guess. I did that last time, and I decided to speak. I'm going to take a little different approach to this. First off, let me thank the city council and the mayor for supporting what we're trying to do here. But I'm going to take a little different approach. I've been up here on previous occasion. I refer to the whole thing with the, with the special use permit and the parcel map as a shell game. I'm not going to go there again. I think most of the people here would agree it's a shell game. I think C4 Equity, they wouldn't call it that, but, but it's a shell game. But a couple of other things I'd like to say. I'm married to a beautiful Chinese lady. Been married to her for going on 15 years. And I think I can make the following statement, and not sound prejudicial in any way, but this is about the closest thing to Chinese water torture that I've been through in a long time, including ups and downs in the relationship. As a former business guy, I can understand why they want to develop their property. I have no problem with them developing that property. But it seems to me that we're trying to put a stick in the eye of the neighbors that live near the property by going ahead with this proposal. And I'll give you another idea, and maybe the C4 Equity people, and I won't look at you directly, but here's another idea. Why not develop this property in a way that's more compatible with the neighborhood? Here's an idea. I have a motor home. I keep it at an off-site storage facility. There are many off-site storage facilities in Reno. There's some right at the bottom of Socrates over there. And I was thinking this morning, if I had that property, what might I do with it? Rather than fight the neighborhood and try to put a round peg in the square hole, so to speak, why don't I consider putting up a RV storage facility? I'm not talking about the ones with, with the enclosed cubicles where people store their household items. I'm talking about where I keep my motor home, where we have the overhead things to keep the coach out of the sunlight, out of the weather, very clean, low maintenance, good security, and something like that would, would be a perfect development of that property at the bottom of the hill, and I might be one of their best customers. There's a lot of people up in those hills that have motor homes and coaches that would probably facilitate or use that facility. Now, we've got, we don't have this battle, we don't have this fight. We've got people working together, a development of a property that makes sense for people. And some of the neighborhood residents could be his best customers, instead of, instead of what we've got here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I give that just as an idea, maybe people could think about.
Appreciate you very much. Ms. Kern, you're up.
For the record, Gail Kern, I am the attorney representing University Ridge Homeowners Association. We did appeal the Planning Commission based upon the preservation of our rights to depend on whether or not we had to go further. We are obligated and required to do that. However, I stand before you with a sincere desire and wish that you will come to the same conclusion as the Planning Commission did, and that is that the special use permit that must be approved in order to allow this parcel map be denied. I burdened you with a very large record in this case. We provided it to the city in hard copy, and I don't even want to think how much room I took up, and we provided CDs to each of you. The reason that we did that is because it all matters, and what occurred before is as relevant tonight as it was back in March when you were hearing the special use permit application. It is all connected. And we were told that it was going to be connected before we appeared in front of you that first time. In a meeting, Ms. Angela Foose, on behalf of C4 Equities, looked all of us in the eye, and she said, if you don't compromise with us, we will go get a parcel map, and we're going to do whatever we want to do regardless of what happens. So you better compromise with us. The members of University Ridge Homeowners Association decided that they were not going to take that compromise, and that they wanted to present their case that the special use permit for the proposed uses at that time should be denied. They prevailed. But in keeping with her promise, C4 Equities then made an application for a special use permit for a parcel map. We are told by C4 Equities that this is in keeping with the industrial property that they own, and that it's been like that for a long time. And they provided documents that go back to the 1980s. Don't be fooled. That property, you've all seen it. It hasn't been used for the last 30 years for anything close to what they're proposing. And with all due respect, the neighborhood around this property is not encroaching, present tense, it encroached a long time ago. The neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, which is something that you must consider in connection with a special use permit, is not mainly industrial. Can I have, however that works? This is, thank you. This is the map of the area, and contrary to the representations that are made by C4, their property is surrounded on all sides by residential property. It is important to consider the character of that area when determining a special use permit. If you will recall, some of the findings that you had, that you absolutely could not make with the last special use permit application involved the location of a rural road gaslight that was, that fed off of Socrates. You had a letter from the railroad indicating how dangerous it would be to have a lot of trucks going up that area, and gaslight clearly was never established or built to sustain the level of industrial use that was being proposed at that time. It's still relevant today, because if you take a look at what their original application involved, the outdoor processing, composting material screening, the onsite vehicle storage and maintenance area, future water tanks, future wash bay, future bulk fuel storage, if you take their parcel map application, it is very clearly intended to preserve and make sure that they will take care of the threat that they made many months ago in order to be able to do exactly what it is that they wanted to do. For purposes of the special use permit application today, you have in your packets a hot topic memo that had been prepared by staff prior to the Planning Commission meeting, in which there was an identification- there was an identification of a myriad of uses that if the parcel map were approved, would no longer require the heightened scrutiny that a special use permit is currently required for that very same parcel of property. I restated those uses in my letter at the bottom of page eight and going up to page nine. I did it in a paragraph form, but I will represent to you that each and every one of those uses came directly from the hot topic memo that had been prepared by staff in order to assist the planning commission in determining whether or not it was appropriate to approve the special use permit for this parcel map. The findings that the planning commission could not make included A and E. And at the last hearing that we had, Councilmember Dorch made the point that there are sometimes findings that are not applicable. And I would agree. For the parcel map application, I don't think that it's applicable to determine whether or not the signage is appropriate. That's not an issue. It's not appropriate to consider the windows that are there. That's not applicable. But findings A and E are applicable. And I would respectfully submit that just as the planning commission could not make those findings, neither can the city council. And that as a result of the inability to make those findings, you would have to deny the special use permit for the parcel map. In support of their application, not only did C4 make what I believe is the unsubstantiated claim that the character of a neighborhood that existed in 1988 should somehow be considered today, I would submit it shouldn't be, but they also submitted that there were many other instances in which industrial proposals had been approved, and therefore you need to approve this one. We took the time to pull those cited instances that were supposedly similar to and would support your determination that the special use permit for this parcel map should be approved. Not a single one is even close. They involved a fire station for Verdi, and the finding that the fire station, you could make the findings for a special use permit for the Verdi Fire Station. There was an application, there were two of them that were actually connected, that involved a zoning map change that changed one of the properties from mixed residential to industrial commercial and another from single-family residential to industrial commercial. What's interesting, though, is that was a zoning map change, and there was in fact findings that the city council reviewed and had to consider that are found in NRS 278.250 Subpart 2. What's interesting is that many of those same findings are ones that you need to consider tonight. And I would submit that you in fact do need to make tho, make that consideration under those findings to determine whether or not it is appropriate to approve this special use permit. Unlike those cases, the findings cannot be made here. And the fact that findings were made in another application are completely and totally irrelevant with respect to this. You have considered and heard many arguments with respect to this particular parcel. I share in the gratitude that you took the time to go up and visit that parcel. My recollection is all of you did prior to the first special use permit application. Don't rely on my representation either. Remember what you saw. This is not a subdivision that's an island in the middle of a bunch of industrial properties. It's just not. What it is, is one of many subdivisions and residential properties that are up in this same area. There are two exactly close together off Socrates. There are ones to the north, there are ones to the east, there are ones to the south. University Ridge is not the island. And it is not a matter that somehow because thirty years ago this subdivision was approved, that now in 2013, a completely different contemplation for that property must somehow be granted. It doesn't. So I would request that you please go through those findings, and it is certainly our position that you will definitely not be able to make findings A and E. We concur with the staff recommendation that those findings cannot be made, and that the decision of the planning commission should be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, any council members have any questions of Ms. Kern's right now? Then right now, we will move to have Mr. Ponny come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before my time starts on our substantive presentation, we did raise an issue of standing. That's a procedural issue that should be addressed. I know we discussed this last month at the meeting, the circumstances are a little different, and there's some additional issues I'd like to bring to your attention on standing. As a matter of law, under Chapter 116 in HOA, can either sue under its own name and on its own behalf, or it can sue in the name of homeowners within its association. University Ridge in this case is clearly suing on its own behalf and in its own name, and that's important for a couple of reasons. Because when you look at the standing criteria that are required to show that you're an aggrieved person, you have to show that you have a protectable property interest that's affected by the application. So all you're looking at is what protectable property interest does University Ridge hold? University Ridge does in fact own property, but none of it is adjacent to this parcel, none of it is within three hundred feet of this parcel. And as a matter of policy, this city has already decided that that heightened review, that SUP review that the university is arguing about, does not apply if you're not adjacent. There are no heightened concerns unless you own property adjacent. So it's our position that given that they are only appearing on behalf of the HOA and not on behalf of individual members, that you must look solely at their protectable property interest, and we don't believe that they have standing in that capacity to appear as an appellant today. So we'd like that addressed before we move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, and from my standpoint, Mr. Ponny, I actually think that's a fairly good point. But they're actually here requesting us to uphold the position of the planning commission, so I'm not considering them necessarily an appellant in this. I mean, I think you're the one that has to establish standing, because you're asking us to overturn the planning commission. And I'm gonna ask the, I'm gonna ask our attorneys to clarify that with me, but that's, that's the way I would assume this, because normally it's the person that's asking us to overturn that position that has to prove standing.
Yeah, I understand that argument, but as Ms. Kern has pointed out,
I under, yeah.
in order to preserve your right to participate in an appeal, you have to appeal every step through the administrative process.
But we allow everyone to participate in the appeal process.
But you waive those rights, for example, if this should end up in court someday, those rights are waived unless you participated every step along the way. So it's important for us as a matter of record that there's a determination tonight whether or not the HOA even has a standing to appear tonight as a party in this appeal. And that's why we've made the request.
John?
Yeah, Councilman Dorch, for the, for the record, John Schuman is Deputy City Attorney. I would concur with your interpretation.
So we do have to make, we do have to make a standing that, we do have to make an interpretation that someone has standing, so we have to make an interpretation that
That the appellant would be
that C4 Equity has standing.
Has standing, I think the
And as long as we make that, we still go, it's still a new hearing, and we can allow everyone to participate as we always have.
Correct.
Okay, so then, Mr. Ponny, why, why do you have standing, and then we'll take care of that issue real quick.
Well, clearly I have standing. I'm the appellant, I'm the owner of the property, I'm the aggrieved party.
That's good enough for me. So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we determine that Mr. Ponny and C4 Equity has standing in this, and we can continue.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Most of you agree with that.
And then we'll continue as we normally do, and we allow, we allow everyone to participate. Once we get to that point, Mr. Ponny, we always allow everyone that wants to participate in this discussion to participate.
I understand, and we reserve our rights should this go the next step.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Michael Ponny McDonald Cronin Wilson, on behalf of C4 Equity. As you know, we're here tonight on an appeal from the planning commission. Hold on a second.
Looks like the polls I'll have to pull up on here.
I apologize. There you go. Go ahead and start it over. You're all familiar with the subject property, seven and a half acres located in north Reno, approximately three hundred feet from McCarran Boulevard, currently improved with an eleven thousand square foot industrial building. Property is surrounded to the north, south, and east by industrial and public facility uses. To the west are approximately five residential lots, however, those are buffered by some significant topographical and elevation changes, as you can see in this picture. Property is master planned and zoned industrial, and it has held those entitlements for over forty years. And that's important to the findings you make tonight, because it held those entitlements at the time this city approved the encroaching uses at University Ridge. Again, we're here tonight on a parcel map, as you can see right here, and it's a standalone parcel map. And what that means is we are not proposing any specific uses, we're not asking for approval of any uses. There is no development, there is no project. It's just a request to divide one parcel into four, as shown. Zoning is unchanged, so uses that are permitted under the industrial use table would still be allowed after the subdivision, with two exceptions. As to parcel one, that parcel is residential adjacent, so it would require an additional special use permit. Parcel three is within three hundred feet and larger than an acre, so it would require a site plan review. As to parcels two and four, they could, any use entitled by right under code could be developed on those parcels. Now, the HOA has argued that somehow by coming with this parcel map, we are trying to circumvent this council's prior denial of a rock crushing and truck terminal use on this parcel. That is simply wrong and contradicts your code. Those uses require a special use permit regardless of where they are located, which that was, so what that means is if we had any intention of developing those uses, which we do not, but if we did, we would have to bring a separate special use permit application before this council. The approval, no matter which parcel, one, two, three, or four, that use were to occur on, it would require a separate special use permit. So any suggestion that we're circumventing something is simply incorrect. Let's look at the findings that are before you tonight. These are the findings for a special use permit, and as you noted, you only look at those that are relevant to the application in front of you. Again, there is no proposed use, there is no development, there is no project with this application, and therefore most, if not all, of these findings simply don't apply. But let's look at them one by one. Finding A requires you to look at the compatibility of a proposed use. Again, there is no proposed use, so this finding is unapplicable. But even if it did apply, it's clearly satisfied because industrial uses are compatible for a number of reasons, which I'll get to later in this presentation. Finding B requires that you evaluate whether the project's in conformance with the master plan. Again, there's no project, so this finding doesn't apply. But even if it did, it's clearly satisfied because this parcel map conforms with your master plan. It does not change the current conforming industrial master plan or base zoning. It conforms with your industrial master plan land use and other policies, and most importantly, it facilitates the preservation of industrial uses from encroachment as required by your master plan. Finding C requires you to value, evaluate whether there are adequate services and infrastructure to support a proposed development. Once again, there's no proposed development. This finding's not applicable, but more importantly, you don't need to have services or infrastructure to support a map. You only look at those in the context of a specific use. Now, the HOA will argue to you in their brief that, hey, you can't approve a map until you have these infrastructure and services in place. That's contrary to your past practice, and it's contrary to common sense. Until you know what use you're gonna put the land to, you don't know what road you need, how big to make the sewer line, what are the water demands, none of those things, none of those things can be determined until you know the use. You're putting the cart before the horse to say you have to have them in place first. Again, even if this finding did apply, it's clearly satisfied in this case because there's already existing utilities on the site. We have a building, it's operational. And those utilities are certainly adequate to support a map. Moreover, once we come forward with development uses sometime in the future, we're gonna have to demonstrate at that point in time in accordance with your code that there are adequate utility services and infrastructure to support any of those uses. Finding D requires you to evaluate a project's traffic impact. Again, there's no project, but more importantly, a map doesn't create traffic. It's a subdivision, uses create traffic. Even if this were applicable, though, the city has already determined, when it approved the University Ridge PUD, that Socrates was designed with sufficient capacity to handle not just the industrial uses on this parcel, but the projected industrial buildout of sixty-plus acres immediately to the east of University Ridge. And keep in mind that at the time you made that determination, it was anticipated that Socrates would connect to the north to Paul Par Boulevard and would have the traffic of a minor arterial. So you're looking at a circumstance today where the traffic loads are substantially less than they were when you already determined Socrates had sufficient capacity to handle industrial uses. Once again, we haven't proposed a use, but when we do, we're gonna have to demonstrate pursuant to your code that there's sufficient engineering, access, circulation, that all those requirements have been satisfied with respect to that particular use as it comes forward. Finding E, finding E has a number of criteria, but when you really look at them, all of the, they all relate to an evaluation of a project and construction of improvements, none of which are proposed with this application. Site location, scale, design, development, again, these are specific use-related evaluations. Intensity, height, layout, setbacks, architectural and design, these relate to the appearance and design and location of structures. We are not proposing any modifications to the existing building. None of these findings are applicable to this application. Now, let's talk about density, because there were some questions about that in September. When you're talking about density created by a map, that is only relevant in the context of a residential application, does not apply to industrial. Industrial uses are different, and this is an important fact to understand. Anything that I can do on four parcels, I can do on one in an industrial zone. When you're looking in a residential context and you give me a parcel, I can build one house and that's it. Not true with industrial. I can put four buildings, I can put four businesses, I can put four different uses. Your staff's already confirmed this. You can, anything you can possibly contemplate as a use going on four parcels, I can already do on one. So in terms of density or intensity and concerns in that respect, it's a matter of law, it's irrelevant. Anything that I can do today, I can, anything I can do after the subdivision, I can do today. Interestingly, the converse is not true, though, because once I've subdivided it, now I'm subject to setback requirements. So the billable square footage is reduced. Actually, when you think about it, the intensity goes down by a subdivision in an industrial lot, not up. Finding E, again, even if it applied, if you look at the limited scope of this application, it's satisfied. The parcel map meets all lot size, lot width, building setback and access requirements. Moreover, this map contributes to the revitalization and investment in the property and a preservation of an industrial use, all of which is to the betterment of the city. Finding F requires to evaluate environmental impacts from a project. Again, no project, but more importantly, a map doesn't create environmental impacts. A map doesn't create dust or noise or vibrations, it's a map. Uses create those issues, but there is no use proposed. Clearly, even if this criteria applied, it's satisfied, because once we come forward with the use, the, we're gonna have to demonstrate to the city in accordance with your code that that particular use satisfies and does not create those environmental impacts. But all you're looking at today is a map, and it does not create those issues. Finally, G and H, and I think everybody concedes that none of these apply, there is no signage or architecture or structures proposed here. So what's that leave you with? That leaves you with the standards under your code and state law. And it's pretty much undisputed that we've satisfied all of those conditions that are required for a parcel map. If this had nothing to do with a special use permit, I don't think anybody would be questioning that we've satisfied what we need to do in order to subdivide this property. Let's talk about finding A, and let's talk about compatibility, because that's the HOA's primary concern, and that's what the planning commission got hung up on. This city council has already determined in a prior case that when you're looking at finding A and you're trying to determine trying to determine what you evaluate, you quote, "evaluate the proposed use, not the zoning." That's what you look at when you're determining compatibility. Again, there is no proposed use here, so this finding doesn't apply. But even if it did, there's no question that given the unique history and character and location of this property, that industrial uses here are compatible. Take a look at your land use policy. It defines industrial uses as compatible with major transportation and/or utility facilities. It also recognizes that they're compatible as a transition area between residential and commercial. Look at the surrounding areas on the zoning. It's surrounded 91% of adjacent acreage to this project is industrial or public facility by definition compatible. Three of the four parcels surrounding this property are industrial or public facility by definition compatible. Transportation is compatible. It's within 600 feet of a railroad corridor, within 400 feet of McCarran Boulevard, a major arterial, within a half mile of US 395. Again, compatible. Public facilities are by definition compatible. To the south is a major facility, electric substation. To the north, a water facility tank. To the east, high voltage power transmission lines. Further to the northeast, another electric substation. Again, by definition in your master plan policy, compatible uses. And let's take a look at what happens after we subdivide. Three of the four parcels are completely surrounded on all sides by industrial or public facility uses, which by definition are compatible. If you go beyond adjacency and you look at surrounding land uses in the area, we did a 3,000-foot circumference. They are predominantly non-residential. 734 of the acres, nearly a two-to-one ratio, are developed with non-residential use. Immediately to the south, a few hundred feet away is the Vaughn Industrial Park. You can see the substation in the background. Further to the south, you see a mixture of industrial and commercial and transportation and public facility uses. Again, you can see it in the background. Looking from the west, there's a mini storage and other commercial and industrial uses in combination with public facility, as well as some residential. To the east, vacant industrial and public facility lands. To the south, public facility and industrial lands. And at the end of Socrates, a gas station, a mini storage, and again, some residential uses. It is at best a mixed bag, but if you look at the square acreage, it is predominantly non-residential. Let's look at surrounding industrial uses. If you focus just on that one particular type. Again, immediately to the south, 95%, the city has already determined, 95% of the uses immediately across McCarran are industrial. Over 20-plus parcels in this area are approved for industrial uses or engaged in industrial use today. This is from the property looking south. You see the transportation. You see the public facilities. You see the warehouse. You see the trucks. You see the railroad. This is all from the property. This is the character of the surrounding use. Is it the sole character? No, but it's the predominant character. Transportation, public facilities, and industrial. Of those 20 parcels that I just mentioned, eight are either adjacent to residential uses or within 300 feet of an encroaching residential use. This is the character that you have approved. Looking from North Virginia at the Comstock Storage, looking off University, you can see the encroaching residential coming in next to the train tracks and the industrial. This picture says it all because you can see the University Ridge homes in the background. There's the electric substation. You see the high voltage power lines. There's the industrial use. There's a railroad corridor. And there's the homes. It is a mixed bag, but is it a mix, it is a mixed bag that is predominantly industrial and public facility, which by definition under your code is compatible. Let's look, something, and this is something that you've already realized. This is your master plan land use policy. When you approve a special planning area, master plan change, you must determine that, quote, "that land use is compatible with adjoining properties." What does this mean? This means when University Ridge came to you in 1988 and said, "We want to change the master plan to SPA and we want to change our zoning to PUD," you had to determine that that change was compatible with the adjoining industrial uses. You had to determine it was compatible. And not only did you do so, you specifically contemplated that there would be 60 acres of industrial use to the east of this subdivision. When you approved it, not only was it compatible with this gaslight property, you determined it was compatible with 60-plus acres of future developable industrial uses. Nothing has changed in that circumstance as I sit here before you today, and that's why it's relevant. You don't have to go to compatibility. You've already made that decision. Finally, your policy plan. Again, from your master plan, the city has an obligation to protect industrial uses from encroachment. Even to the extent that this was not an encro, even to the extent you did not believe it was compatible, you've approved an encroaching residential use on a previously existing viable industrial area. You have an obligation under your master plan not to protect their encroachment, but to protect my client's right to develop his industrial land. That's your policy. And that's what you've seen when you look at the character of the surrounding land uses. When you look at this neighborhood as a whole, that's what exists here. Yes, there's been some smattering of residential encroachment over the years, but you cannot use that as a basis to deny somebody a right to simply come in with a parcel map. At the end of the day, for the Planning Commission, it came down to compatibility and finding A. In the absence of a proposed use, they looked at what uses are possible under the code. And for them, ultimately, they thought industrial uses are not compatible. For all the reasons I just went through, that conclusion is clearly erroneous. Industrial uses are compatible. This city has already determined it. But more importantly, you don't even need to go there because this is a standalone parcel map, which means most, if not all of the SUP findings, simply don't apply. And what you should be focused on is whether or not this application complies with your ordinances, your code with respect to parcel maps, and state law. And it's undisputed that it does. For all these reasons, we would respectfully request you reverse the Planning Commission decision and approve a special use permit for a standalone parcel map on this property. Thank you.
Good evening, Bern Clos, Senior Planner. We all know what the application is for, so I won't go into that. Put up the PowerPoint. Basically, what we're looking at here is a special use permit. And what is the special use permit for? Special use permit is for uses that generally create environmental problems for neighboring properties such as noise, dust, fumes, pollution, traffic, and compatibility issues. Other uses that are allowed in the industrial zone are permitted uses. And those are generally permitted because they do not create those environmental problems that the more objectionable uses would create that require a special use permit. What we have here is the list of uses in the industrial zone. There's about 15 that require a special use permit and about 50 that are permitted. In looking at, as you all know, the council determined that two of the uses that the applicant applied for before outdoor processing, which was the rock crushing operation and a truck terminal, required a special use permit. The council considered that and denied that. There are other uses such as chemical processing, a concrete batch plant, that would also require a special use permit. And again, those are required because they're objectionable uses and they, and they create impacts beyond their parcel. In looking at the permitted uses, there are a number of commercial, office, and institutional uses that would most not likely locate on this property due to limited access, visibility, topographic constraints. These would include bar, restaurant, convenience store, service station, post office, school, food processing, wholesale bakery. Other uses which are more industrial in nature such as a railroad shop, yard or shop, indoor manufacturing, processing and assembly, with distribution and warehousing would generally require a larger, flatter site. So they generally would not locate on a property such as this just due to the topographic constraints. So based on the site's location, size, and topographic constraints, there are several permitted uses on the list that could reasonably be placed on the site. These include maintenance, repair, and renovation, mini warehouses, outdoor storage, welding repair, auto repair, and wholesale construction materials, which in general have limited impacts which would be contained on their site. Other uses such as adult businesses or crematoriums could not be established on the site because there are locational criteria, there's a distant separation for these uses from residential. In looking at the site as it currently exists before parcelization, everything, every use that you just saw on the previous page would require a special use permit. All the permitted uses would require a special use permit. With parcelization of the property, all, all uses on parcel one, and I'll bring up that map. All uses on parcel one right here would require a special use permit. Parcel number two would allow all permitted uses. And of course, all uses that require a special use permit now would also require a special use permit. Parcel three would require a site plan review because it's greater than one acre and it's located within 300 feet of residentially zoned property. A site plan review is an administrative review similar to a special use permit, has similar findings, and it's appealable to the city council should that need to occur. Parcel number four is greater than 300 feet from residentially zoned property, so it would allow any of the permitted uses. Again, any use that requires a special use permit now would still continue to require a special use permit. In looking at the findings, again, as indicated before, the Planning Commission could not make findings A or E related to compatibility and site design. Staff's view of the findings and how they apply to this case is as follows. Finding A is not applicable because there is no use proposed. Finding B, which relates to the master plan, in this case, site has a master plan designation of industrial. The site is zoned industrial. The parcels proposed meet the standards of the industrial zone. Therefore, it's consistent with the master plan. Also, the applicable policies that, that we found related to this case, P1, related to access, is applicable and therefore, the project is in conformance with the master plan. Finding C must show that there are or will be adequate services and infrastructure to support the proposed parcel map. Services include police and fire protection, water and sewer. Police and fire staff had no comments on this project because there's no use proposed. The site is served by community water and the existing building utilizes a septic tank and leach field system for sanitary sewer. As development occurs on the site, these services are available or can be provided and expanded as necessary. Since adequate services are available or can be provided, this finding can be made. Finding D must show that the proposed proposal adequately mitigates project traffic. Again, the site has access from Socrates up Gaslight Lane through an existing easement. They are required with the parcel map to show how internal access is provided. At such time as a particular use comes in, a traffic impact analysis may be required based on what the use is. But in order to approve the parcel map, access has to be provided for. So finding D can also be made. Finding E, which is related to the environmental or site design, again, there is no use proposed. Therefore, it is not applicable in this case. Finding F must show that there are no adverse impacts created by the development that would be detrimental to aerial properties. Again, there is no project proposed other than creating the parcels. So therefore, that is, that finding is not applicable. Findings G and H, which relate to building, architecture, and signs, again, there's no buildings proposed. Those are not applicable. Coming to NRS 278 462, which relates to parcel maps, state law limits the review criteria for a parcel map to requirements for street grading, drainage provisions, and lot design as reasonably necessary, and may require off-site access, street alignment, servicing width, water quality, water supply, and sewage provisions, and only as necessary and consistent with the existing use of any land zoned for a similar use located within 660 feet of the proposed development. Based on these limitations in state law, findings C and D appear to be the only findings that can be considered when reviewing the SUP. As previously discussed, staff believes that findings C and D can be made. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Any council members at this point? Mr. Dort?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have questions. I just want to clear something up that was stated earlier. And I think Ms. Fuss was being portrayed in a little incorrectly earlier in that I asked for that meeting to be held to see if there was any common ground that we could be, that could be reached. And we did discuss the possibility of parcel mapping this because it had been brought up. But the, my recollection, and I could be wrong, but my recollection of the meeting was we had those discussions and then Ms. Fuss came in the meeting and actually discussed uses that they would be willing to take off of the table and hours of operation that they would be taking off the table. I, I do not recall her making any threats in that meeting. I, I really, I don't. And maybe everyone felt threatened because of the conversations that we had had, but I just, I thought we, when she came in, she talked about taking off the truck terminal, taking off the rock crushing, changing the hours of operation, things that they were willing to do on their side. Obviously, we didn't come to any resolution on any of that. I'm not, I'm not saying that that happened. But that's just, my recollection is different than yours. And I just wanted, I wanted to get that out there because I, I don't remember threats being made once she came in the room. Maybe there were, but I just, I don't recall them. That said, who do I want to start with? I guess, Mr. Ponty, I just have a couple of questions for you. I guess the first one is something that you stated in your presentation was that anything he can do on one parcel, he can do on four. And, and I understand that to some degree, but if that's the case, why subdivide it at all?
Subdividing does a number of things. One, it improves the marketability and functionality of the parcel. It allows development in phases as market conditions permit, not uncommon.
You can't do it in phases if it's one parcel?
No. Not if, not if, depends on how the development wants to proceed. I mean, I guess I would answer the question and say the reason we're subdividing is the same reason that pretty much anybody else would subdivide. It provides a number of different opportunities that may not exist with one. Whether it's financing opportunities, whether it's marketability and sale of portions of it, you know, there's a number of different options that become available with parceling that don't exist as one single parcel.
And then I guess, then, can we get, I don't know if you can do it with, with yours? Can we get the, the map up? Just the parcel map up? And I guess, I mean, when you look at parcel one, and that's, it's just, I mean, it's 50 feet wide for most of that. And I think, I don't know how, how long that is, but, and there's a pretty heavy slope there.
Correct.
So I guess my question would be, how is that parcel more marketable?
Well, worst-case scenario, that parcel creates a buffer for the residential folks. Worst-case scenario. But if you look the way it's configured, there are uses up at the top at the north end. And again, I don't have a crystal ball. I'd love to see someone creative come in and tell me what they'd love to do on that parcel.
And here's my concern with that parcel. Let's, let's assume that that parcel's not developable for a minute. And let's say an LLC owns that and decides to stop paying taxes on it. That buffer's always going to be there, but then it becomes a problem of the local governments because they put a lien on it, they acquire the property, and now it becomes the government's property because it's an undeveloped piece of land and someone didn't want it.
I think the speculation's getting a little extreme on that one. I mean, I don't know that you would ever consider whether or not in some future time, a parcel, an owner goes belly up or bankrupt to the point that a property gets abandoned as a ground to deny an application for a map. Certainly, you could say that for a residential developer that ever came in.
My concern is that that parcel is My concern is that that parcel is really unuseful.
Well, I disagree.
And maybe, and maybe it's being carved out for a different reason.
I disagree that it's unusable.
Okay.
There's 43,000 square feet of available use on that parcel, and the north parcel end alone has usability.
Okay.
Now, I won't disagree that it's not as usable as the other three, but it certainly is usable.
Okay. Okay. That's all I've got for you right now.
Thank you.
I actually have a couple of questions. When was this property purchased?
About two years ago.
Okay, and the prior owner, was this part of a, was this one parcel purchased, or did the owner of it have multiple parcels and you purchased this one parcel?
It was in the current configuration of one parcel when it was purchased.
Okay, so the prior property owner, to increase its marketability and value, did not attempt to parcel it to increase its value for sale?
He did not.
Okay, so I'm trying to rationalize why one parceling increases the value when the prior owner didn't, if that's your argument.
Well, obviously, every parcel that a subsequent owner comes in and subdivides, it's because the subsequent owner sees some value in doing that subdivision. I mean, the argument that you're making would negate any residential subdivision in the entire valley. We'd be looking at a lot of alfalfa ranches when you walked out the door. Subsequent owners have different ideas in mind. So for this owner, they believe that subdividing this property in this manner not only improves the feasibility and the functionality of the space, but it improves the marketability, it improves the ability to and facilitates the development of the property, all of which is to the benefit of the city and to the development of the neighbors. I mean, their complaint is, I don't like the way it looks now. Well, this is a good way to fix that so that it has some viable uses, which are the benefit of everybody.
And I would agree, and as a, as a businessperson and someone who has seen many developments, when you go in and purchase something, you have an idea of what you're going to do with that property. But you're telling us today that there has been, not before us or the planning commission, any intended uses proposed nor denied. So I guess I'm getting to the point of, if there was a purchase with value and marketability of this parcel, there was an intent of use?
No. The problem I have with where you're going is you're asking a question that's not relevant to the application. We don't have to show you any, there's no finding that says why we're doing a subdivision. I've told you why, but I don't have to demonstrate that, nor is that something that would preclude you from making the findings here today. You have to look at whether this satisfies the law, whether it satisfies your code. That doesn't have anything to do with intent. Now, I've told you what our intent is, and it's a valid intent, and it's undisputed on the record. But what you have to look at is, can you make the findings? None of them say, gosh, Mike, why are you doing this? That's not one of the findings.
Okay, but you can tell me today that before us or the planning commission, there has been no proposed uses that we have denied.
There are no proposed uses with this application, there's no proposed development, there's no proposed project. I have said specifically, as to the uses you have denied in the past, they are not intended and cannot be brought forward simply because you approved this parcel map. We would have to go through a separate process and bring forward a separate special use permit application, and I strongly know what the outcome of that would be. But that is not before you today, and it is not proposed, and it is not our intent.
Mr. Mitten?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on Councilmember George's questioning inquiry about parcel one.
Yes.
Would you agree that one of the purposes of subdivision is related to tenureship and the ability to separate a parcel into separate ownership?
I don't know that that's one of the purposes, but it's one of the possibilities.
It could happen. Okay. So say parcel one is sold. Tell me about this. When you submitted your application, did you submit a topographic map showing the slopes of the entire property?
Nope.
No topographic map? Okay. Do we have any ideas of the range of slopes on parcel one?
I don't know if you do, but what I can say is that the size and configuration and location of parcel one satisfies your code.
Okay, well, my understanding of our code is that slopes over 30% are non-touchable, not allowed to be developed. Is that correct, Staff? I'm seeing a nodding from Staff.
Staff is saying yes.
So if we have a parcel-
Staff, answer the question, Staff.
That depends. If the, if the site is considered a hillside site based on slope, then that would be true. If it's not a hillside site, then they could potentially grade to 30%.
Okay. Up to 30%?
Well, or over 30%. It just depends on if the site as a whole meets the hillside requirements, 25% or more.
Oh, okay. 25%, okay, 20-
25% or more exceeds 15%.
I got it. I got you. So if parcel one, 25%, is a slope over 30% in grade, no development can occur on that.
No, that's something we would have to address if and when a project is proposed on that parcel.
We would figure that out.
Yes.
But say, for example, it is highly compromised in slopes, and I also see some encumbrances of easements, which I assume are no build areas. Say we have a parcel, then, that has very little usability. You know, maybe you could get, I don't know, something the size of this little open area here on a building, or, you know, could it be possible that we've created an unusable parcel that then could be sold to someone else, and the city, through this approval, has created a parcel that has no usability under our regulations, and then we're in a Lucas-like-taking situation?
Again, I think you're getting into speculation that goes far beyond what's in the record here tonight. What we have said is that this is the proposal that we believe to be viable and functional for this owner.
Okay.
When a use is identified for parcel one, it will be brought in. What we have said on the record is those uses will have to comply with all conditions in your code if and when that use is brought forward.
Okay, so we're going to leave that concept with this parcel and its usability, its economic viability to another day. I get that. But it seems like the basis of a lot of your argument is no project, no project, no project. Well, and so the findings are not applicable, not applicable, not applicable. I have a problem with that. I feel that based upon not any project coming in, and I'm sure you're aware of our code provision where multiple applications are routinely processed, we don't have enough information about what is the activities on these parcels to look to see how we can make the findings and what the impacts will be. I think we've taken a step backwards with this request that is showing us, we have to consider the range of uses. Everything is possible. The intensity could be tremendous. And look at both the upper level and consider that, particularly in this situation where we have the hardest of compatibility that you find in land use, which is industrial against single-family. And like you said back in 88, you know, we were determined it was compatible when we approved this residential next to industrial, but I think that was with the basis that we had these processes to look through. And in some instances, hard industrial, the hardest of industrial may not be, may not be appropriate adjacent to residential, but some of the more softer uses of industrially are. And that's why our code would include things like office or the RV storage facilities. And we look at it on a case-by-case, but you're coming forward with not enough information. That's the whole foundation of your argument, is that we should let it go because you are not providing us information to make our decision. How do you respond to that?
A couple of responses. First off, I don't need to propose a use for a parcel map. It's not required by code, and it's common to not bring one forward. Zoning is established, and zoning is not being changed. So you're asking me to bring forward information that I'm not required to bring forward under law to get the approval with which we're seeking. You're also trying to take into consideration information that's not before you tonight, and it's not in the record, and it's not part of this application. In terms of your concerns about your ability to consider future uses, what you also need to be aware of is when this property was originally, when the PUD was approved, and the city determined that it was compatible with this property, this property was in the county. You had less control over it then than you do now. You had less control over it then than you will if this parcel map is approved. So if it was compatible then, when you had absolutely no control whatsoever of what uses went in there, under what conditions they went in, you had no right to even look at them, you have more today than you did then. And again, that goes back to my argument of compatibility. It's clearly satisfied. The concerns you have are nebulous, and there don't exist in the record that's before you. Everybody is getting caught up on things that aren't in front of you because those are the arguments that everybody would like to make. They're all concerned about this bogeyman that doesn't exist. It's a map. I know that's offensive for some people to say, but at the end of the day, it's a map. That's all that's being proposed. The uses are the uses that are entitled by right under the code. Those are the uses that this city has already established as proper and appropriate uses on an industrial zone property. This is your policy, not mine. These are the policies that you've established.
Okay.
But, at the end of the day, if this is, what was that? At the end of the day, if this is approved, we have less control over this property than we do today. We might have more than we had in 1988, but we have less control over this property if we approve this subdivision than we do today.
And explain to me why, under your findings, that would be a concern.
I look at finding A, and the proposed use is compatible with existing surrounding land uses and development. I don't know what uses are going to go there, but I know what would be allowed today and what will be allowed tomorrow if I approve this. So based upon that, I need to look at those and determine if those are compatible with the area around there. And that's my opinion.
And your concern is that those uses are not compatible. Here's the concern that I have with that approach, though. You're then engaged in spot zoning because you are treating this project different than any other similarly situated industrial property in the city of Reno.
I am not treating it-
Because you have established as a matter of code and as a matter of policy that if it's not adjacent, it doesn't matter how close it is to residential uses, you may engage in uses as a matter of right. That's your policy. There is no heightened review.
I am treating this-
There is no heightened security screening, there is no need for you to look at it more closely because it's not adjacent.
I'm treating this property the same as I would treat any other residentially adjacent industrial property in the city of Reno.
But you're not treating it that way because you're looking at what will the uses be allowed after subdivision, and your concern is, we will be entitled to the exact same uses as any other non-adjacent industrial property, and that's what you're saying is troubling to you.
No, I'm saying that as I look at this, as I'm saying, as I look at this special use permit, I am treating this special use permit application the same way I would treat any other special use permit application for an industrial zoned property adjacent to residential. I'm treating it the exact same way. So if I was looking at any other industrial zoned property, I would want to know what uses are going to be allowed there. And that's what I'm saying.
So you're saying, as, in your opinion, you could never come forward with a standalone parcel map on an industrial property?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I'm saying, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this one, and I'm saying that I have concerns about the uses that could be allowed if we parcel this based upon what I'm seeing today.
And I would come back to the fact that the city has already made the determination when it approved the approaching residential use, that all industrial uses are compatible. I understand your concern, but I believe that issue was made by a council before you.
And I believe this council has to determine whether or not we can make the findings today. And I presented why I'm concerned about finding A. There's other findings I have concerns with that I'll get into in a minute, but I'm just, I'm just laying it out for you now, is because I don't know what's going there, and I can't, I can't condition it to what's allowed there, I'm going to be concerned. I'm not saying that there's no industrial uses that can go there. I mean, I believe firmly, this is an industrial piece of property that was there prior to the residential going in, and I think that you have some rights that are attached to that property that you can operate there. What those uses are, you need to come to me and see. But, but I'm telling you right now, to just blindly say, any of the, any of the allowed uses that would be allowed on a non-adjacent parcel should be allowed there, I've got concerns with that.
And that's exactly what we're saying. And that's exactly the analysis that you have to make. Because those are the, we haven't come with a specific proposed use, so the uses that are going to be allowed are those allowed by code.
And that's what I've got to, that's what I've got to take into consideration-
Yep, that's what you got to be looking at.
-as I make my deliberations today.
That's what you got to be looking at.
Right.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on that, you made a statement that the intensity is actually reduced within, when you subdivide an industrial property. That may be true, it may not be. I, I don't know that you've provided any evidence to that fact. You also posed to Councilmember George just a moment ago that, you know, by his line of thinking, you could never do a parcel map on an industrial property without a project and another entitlement bundled. I don't see that true. I think you need to look at the property on its total, and this one has a number of issues related to it that I guess would be best to kind of explore, because I think we need to consider the range of uses, the intensity, and all the infrastructure issues. So we're coming in off a private road, correct?
We're coming off of Gaslight Lane.
And that is a private road, or is it a city-maintained road?
City-maintained.
Is it to industrial standards?
It's not been developed onto this parcel yet. Excuse me.
Okay, so we have a, I'll let the engineer speak. Mr. Gall?
For the record, Bill Gall, senior civil engineer. The intersection of Gaslight Lane and Socrates is a city-maintained road.
Okay.
For about 150, 200 feet, and then it becomes property of, I believe, NV Energy, and they have an access, a private access on the NV Energy property to their property. So at the intersection of Gaslight and Socrates, it is city-owned.
Okay, and it, is it meeting industrial standards?
It meets industrial standards. Really, I mean, the length of Gaslight Lane is very short. It really meets, it meets the industrial standards at the intersection as far as the width. It narrows down, very narrow. Immediately following that, it comes to about 20 to 24 foot in width, and then when it becomes, when it hits, when it gets to NV Energy and that access, it's a 30-foot easement, and it's approximately a 20-foot paved width on that easement, which is our standards for, you know, private drive aisles and driveways and stuff like that. That would be a minimum, and that would be a fire, for necessary for fire.
What are the standards for a standard industrial road, though?
We don't, we don't have a standard industrial road standard. We have, you know, local roads, collector roads. You know, a local road would be a 24-foot road. The collector road that, with parking on each side would be 34-foot. You get a little wider when you get to a collector street. So it, we don't have a industrial, you know, standard, per se.
But the fire department, if we have some response needs out here, they're going down that private road, correct?
They would be.
They would be. Okay. And so we don't know, based upon this activity, what, you know, impact that would be to them, or, you know, or if, what, the range of uses that could be put on the property because it's industrial is so great. We're talking about four parcels now, so we can have more people there, more, you know, businesses with different sort of hazardous or chemical, you know, with those sheets they have. We don't know any of that, so, correct?
We don't know what their uses would be. We know that, as it stands right now, they have access to the parcel, fire does, through the easement and the access road. And with the parcelization of the map, we require the access easements to access all the additional parcels that are created internally. They would have access to that, and when any development came forward, we would require appropriate improvements to the roadways as necessary.
Okay. And what about the sewer to the property? Is the property served by sewer?
No. The existing, well, the existing property has, there's existing building, and it has a septic system on it.
A septic system.
There is sewer, the closest sewer that they could go through, the NV Energy property and down McCarran is 1,200 feet to the east. They could sewer down the easement and through Gaslight and get down to Socrates there. It's about 1,700 feet to the west. There is direct, it's about 40 feet above it, about 200 feet off of it, if, but it would be through private property to head directly to the west from the west property line. Per, you know, state standards and, you know, county code, they would be the ones responsible for permitting any additional septic or sewer. They would not, per their standards, would not require connection to a public sewer system if they could septic the area.
Okay, we just don't know, you know, since septic and wastewater treatment is an environmental issue, we don't have enough information to know if we're going to have one septic system on here or one on each property, correct?
Each, each parcel would have to have, if they had a building, would have to have a septic system within the property limits, within that parcel line. You can't, you can't parcel and then create, you know, four parcels, four buildings, and create one single, you know, septic system for it. And parcel sizes, they have to have minimum parcel sizes to even request a septic system, and it's an acre minimum if you have, if you have water utility, if you have well water, it's a, it's lower, it's even smaller. So these meet the minimum standards to have septic on site, and part- And part of the actual approval, once they came through with the parcel map at the end, they would have to demonstrate to Washoe County via, you know, percolation tests and stuff, that the remaining parcels that are currently not developed have the ability to perk and to create septic systems on site or that map. They would then determine, you know, the county would then force them to go to a public system if they couldn't demonstrate that all four parcels could create their own septic.
Can you build over a leach field?
No.
Okay. So that Parcel 1 that we know is somewhat compromised on hill slopes and encumbered with easements, the building that goes on that could not go on the leach field. Some area is going to have to be put aside for the leach field then
That's correct.
If they put a building on there. So that property may be even more restricted in its buildability or usability with leach systems.
Depending on what they decide to build out there
They'll do.
And how they use it, they may be required at that point, you know,
Yeah.
To go to a public sewer system.
Yeah. So in terms of infrastructure, we're on a private road where we'll be responding fire to. We don't really know, you know, what the nature of response could be. It could very much range with the use. And we know that we don't have wastewater treatment to the property. So, you know, I guess this gets to my issue of you said that it is less intense to subdivide a property. It may be, it may not be. I'm not seeing any evidence to that fact. And to make these findings on impacts, I think we need a little more information.
My response would be that you have all the information in the record to make the findings with respect to this application, including your staff's position that it satisfies the findings with respect to infrastructure and services. I would disagree that you do not have enough information to make findings on this today. There's more than enough because I think you're getting, again, looking beyond the application that's in front of you. This is a map, and you're looking into issues that are relevant and will need to be addressed at the use stage. This is a map, and you're getting the cart a little bit before the horse with all due respect by trying to engage in these types of considerations when all we're talking about is a subdivision of an existing use with existing access. Thank you.
I'm ready for discussion if anyone -- I'm just looking to see if anyone had any other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody got any questions? You want to ask at this time?
Well, I'll chime in on discussion then if no one wants to get going.
Why don't you start, Mr. George?
I can do that. You know, and Mr. Pawnee, I agree with you that our staff's gotten up there and told you their determination on these findings, but it's incumbent on us to make the findings. Otherwise, we wouldn't have to have these hearings. I mean, and it's up to us to determine their applicability. Otherwise, we wouldn't have to have these hearings. This isn't a site plan review. It's incumbent upon this council to determine whether or not we can make these findings or not. And it's up to us to determine which of these findings are applicable. And, I mean, there's been a great discussion about Finding A, and I do think that we have to look at the uses that are going to be allowed on those additional parcels because we're not conditioning this to any certain use. So when I'm looking at these additional parcels going in, I need to look at whether or not all of the uses that could be allowed there are compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. And I can't make that finding. And then I look at Finding C and whether or not there are adequate or will be adequate infrastructure services and infrastructure to support proposed development. And sewer and water are a concern of mine. You know, I'm not sure that Parcel 1 would work with a leach field. It might, but clearly, without being able to determine, and these are findings that are here. I mean, it's not, you can't just push them away and say, "Oh, that'll happen down the road." We have to make these findings tonight. So I'm not convinced that there are or will be adequate services and infrastructure to support this parcel map. And then Finding D is whether it mitigates traffic. And I think there is great concern on whether or not that road, at 20 feet wide, I think is what I heard at one point, is adequate for four industrial parcels in this proposal. So based on that, I can't make A, C, or D. Now, I will agree with you that there are other findings on here that are not applicable. But if there's just one of these I can't make, I can't approve the special use permit. And there's three that I can't make, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pawnee, in a perfect world, let's say you were granted the special use permit. What would be your next step? Sorry, I should have asked it earlier.
Pass the question period. If we were granted, what would be our next step? Well, obviously, we'd get it filed, and then the client would evaluate what can you do on the different uses, look at the market conditions, look at financing, and decide whether he wants to come forward with a project now or later, or sell it. I don't know. That's something we'll cross if and when you approve it.
So it sounds like he has intended use. So in -- so if you were not granted the SUP tonight, tell me, what's your next step?
I'll have to evaluate that in the morning.
You know, I -- how much is this land worth? Do you know?
I don't know, as I sit here today.
Do you happen to know how much your property is worth, sir?
[inaudible]
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to echo Councilmember George's comment that we do have to look at the range of possibilities because the applicant has not demonstrated a level of information that supports us to make those findings. So I agree with that. In addition, I'd like to chime in on Finding Number F. And I'm kind of playing off his position that subdivision is less intensive. It may be, it may not be, but the finding calls for us to determine that there will not be adverse environmental impacts such as smoke, noise, glare, dust. I have not seen that evidence, so I cannot make that finding either. It may be that there is less intensity, but what I see is Parcel 1 is a much more intense parcel now because it is so much more restricted, whereas before, there was more room to work on the property. And so Parcel 1, to me, has created a property that has just tremendous impact and ability to cause these environmental impacts closest to the residential area. So I'd like to add that for Finding F.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree with the comments that we've heard previously. I think that we heard, well, in fact, it's pretty much in front of us, no use, no use, no use, therefore, no impact, not applicable. It is just a map. And I'm becoming concerned that subterfuge is behind those statements. There isn't enough information for me to be able to make the findings.
Ms. Sheeby?
I agree with Councilwoman Breckus. I mean, I feel like we're going backwards here. I can't imagine the amount of money that you have to spend on this, and so I really apologize. But I really do, I think that we've gone backward on this, and I think right now it's irrelevant until you bring a use before us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Based on what I've heard, I'm going to make a motion to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission based on my inability to make findings A, C, and D. And I know Ms. Breckus chimed in that she couldn't make Finding F. And as I stated earlier, if there's just one of these findings that we can't make, we cannot approve the special use permit. So based on that, my recommendation is to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Your honor?
I have a motion. Second?
Just for the record, John Shipman, deputy city attorney. Could that motion go one step further? And there was discussion about findings which were not applicable. Could you identify for the body, just so that we have a clear record, what we think is applicable and what is not applicable?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I mean, clearly, I don't think G and H are applicable. And as I've stated in previous meetings, I mean, what we typically do on a special use permit is we determine which findings are applicable, and those are the ones we address. So I think B is probably not applicable. I'm not convinced that E is applicable, although I think someone has brought up Finding E. So, I mean, those are the ones I would say that are probably not applicable.
Thank you.
I would agree with that statement of applicability.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any public comment?
Move to adjourn.
A motion adjourned. All in favor, say aye. This meeting is adjourned.